Good evening and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for August 29th. This is a regular city council meeting. I am Menlo Park Mayor Jen Wallison. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note that public speaker time may be limited depending on the number of speakers we have for each item. We're going to begin with our roll call. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. We have city council members Drew Combs, Maria Dorr, and Betsy Nash. And city clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. And again echoing a welcome to our August 29th regular city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment tonight on any of our agenda items, if you are participating virtually, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, you can press star nine after the mayor calls for comment on that item. For members of the public who are participating in chambers, please complete a speaker card at that back table. You can return to me at the clerk's desk. Did also want to alert the public that we have a current vacancy on our finance and audit commission. We are accepting applications through 5:00 PM this Friday, September 1st. For more information, you can visit menlopark.gov/commissions. That concludes my introductions at this time. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, city clerk Karen. So we are now moving on to C, which is Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under city council member reports. Staff will be providing an update to Consent Calendar Item G5, which is waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance for streetery's outdoor dining areas. So at this time, does any city council member wish to pull or modify an agenda item? Councilmember Combs? Okay, great. We're moving on now to Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment, other than to provide general information. I will be calling for public comment at the appropriate times for members of the public to address the city council on any number of agenda sections, which include Presentations and Proclamations, Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments, Consent Calendar, Regular Business, Informational Items, City Council Member Reports, and Closed Session. So at this time, city clerk Karen, can you please call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Linda Jolly, followed by Rachel Bickerstaff.
The microphone seems to be falling apart. Please remember my name because you might be hearing about me in the future. I have worked as a journalist, and what has happened here in your city is worthy of media coverage, including what has happened in the past. And please remember the term dirty cops, because I will spread this term all over your city if I don't get your full cooperation. There are dirty cops in Menlo Park. The duck pond makes this place look really neat, really nice, but actually, there's a den of dirty cops right next door. In 1984, my life was wiped out by dirty cops in Menlo Park. And now I'm in a position to fight back, and I will. What happened to me last night is unspeakable and should never happen to any, any person, anywhere, okay? I was sleeping in my car, which I do habitually because I have not been able to get a job recently and for other reasons. This was about 2:00 AM, and I heard voices, and there was loud knocking on my car, which woke me up out of the deep sleep, which I need to do my work. There were apparently two people out there. They didn't even bother to mention that they were cops. They knocked on my car repeatedly, and then they grabbed my car and started shaking it all over the place. Now, how can this happen in a city where we have lots of intelligent people, where police thugs come up to your car and shake it and pound on it in the middle of the night for no reason, except that I have an expired registration, which happened partly because of stupid activities by your cops? I won't go into that at this time. Okay, I was attacked at 2:00 AM. I had very little sleep. I'm 80 years old. It's not easy for my body to take this kind of thing, and I am furious. And I want your city to compensate me. I want your city to pay me $2,000 for the pain and loss of time that I experienced through this. And if you don't pay me, I'll smear your excrement all over this city, and the word dirty cops in Menlo Park will become a common, commonplace expression. And stuff has been done in the past that is far worse than this. I won't bring it out tonight. The two cops whose names I have on this are Julio Mara and Robert Campos. Okay. The police abuse is widespread in this area. A friend of mine, Arum James, has become rather famous for fighting police abuse, and myself and James and other people will fight it to the limit. And now, as I said, I have been a journalist. I am preparing editorial letters right now on this matter, and if you don't take action to fix this and reverse it, we're going to have your neck in a noose, okay?
Thank you for your comment.
All right.
Thank you for your comment.
Pay attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rachel Bickerstaff, followed by Rose Bickerstaff, with donated time from David Bickerstaff.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Bickerstaff, 30-year resident of--
Rachel, can you get a little closer to the mic?
30-year resident of the Bell Haven community in the city of Menlo Park, giving honor to God first, Mayor Wallison, Vice Mayor Taylor, council members and staff. I can't believe I'm standing before you discussing this issue of the naming of the MPCC. This is an item that we thought we would have behind us already, and we all can say we have more important things to discuss within our city. We all should be striving to involve in our lives. Our community is part of our lives. The MPCC project started as three standalone buildings and has evolved to this magnificent multi-generational campus for all to enjoy together. Let's accept the massive gift and acknowledge the giver. Thank you, Meta, formerly Facebook at the time. We've been asking for our own library, upgraded community center, gym, youth center, and senior center for years. Our community member, a community member, Mr. Matt Henry, submitted designs on how this would work on your city-owned land. The giver has given us that ask and so much more. We should not be ungrateful by putting someone else's name on the campus. The name of the brand-new state-of-the-art campus should be Menlo Meta Community Center. What is the fear? Our culture is in the people that live here, not in a name that used to be on one of the old buildings. Our community has been very diverse for a very long time. We will celebrate our cultures in our neighborhood, not just one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Give me one moment, Rose, just to update our timer. As mentioned, our next speaker is Rose Bickerstaff, with donated time from David Bickerstaff, followed by Cheryl Bims.
Mayor Wallison, Vice Mayor Taylor, Councilmember Combs, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Moore.
Rose, apologies for interruption. Can you get a little closer to the--
A little closer?
Yes, please.
Well, I'm shrinking. Thank you. And to our city manager, our city attorney, and our staff. As Rachel just mentioned, I'm beside myself because we have really important things to do, and this matter of naming our campus should not be taking place at all. But I'm going to give you a little bit of background of what happened 40 years ago, when the name first appeared on one of our buildings in the Bayside community, also known as Bell Haven. Well, when this name, Ms. Onetta Harris surfaced, the community said absolutely not, because there was no contribution that would merit her name being on a city building. So after that, when it came by way of, at that time was Homeowners Association, I was here, a part of it, so I don't have to ask anyone. I was a witness. So, because since then, everyone wondered how this came about. So there were two people that called up and apologized for ever taking a part of it, because they didn't even know that there was any contribution from Ms. Harris or not. But it was one of those things that sometime is played when it shouldn't be, and that's the race card. So at that time, we had Billy Ray White as one of the council members, and there was a little nudging going on. First, the council members didn't want to vote for it, but after a little tugging and whatever the conversations were, the council members did vote, but not because of any input or support from the community. The community never gave any support. I want to just make that clear, because we have so much misinformation glooming around and a lot of rumor mongering going around. And when you don't have information that's factual, sometime you don't know how to make a fair decision. So I don't mind telling you what I'm telling you, because that's the only way I know to do is to tell you the truth. But I have heard so many things lately, and you've heard the same thing, because I've watched people get up before the mic. So what I wanted to say, that as others have said before you, that this is a brand-new campus, and the support and input should come from people who are residents of this city. So all of the rhetoric we've been hearing, people don't live here. They don't live in the community. I used to be here, doesn't count. And talking about I still own some property doesn't count. Join the other 267 or whatever absentee owners. So we don't want to get into that. So I should want to say that we have to do what is fair. You're in a decision-making position, and sometimes these decisions aren't popular. We cannot be buddy-buddy with people and do our community and city a disservice. We really have to get this right this time. We don't want to relive a 40-year-old mistake, and that's what we are asked to do. And I just want to say what we are doing, and Rachel just mentioned Menlo Meta Community Campus, is what people in our community did vote on. And because it covers our city, it covers our gift giver, and it covers our community. And all plays a role in what has happened on this site. And I also want to say, and I think Rachel covered it, that we are trying to move forward, not backwards, and that's what people are asking us to do. I have never heard so many, so much misinformation to make things sound really more than it is, and inventing history. And I hear don't allow people to erase our legacy. There is no legacy. Let's get it right. History cannot be erased. It can be altered. It can be invented, but history is history. It's what happened. And I am appalled that anyone would think that you could roll a name that didn't get support 40 years ago, and here we are 40 years later, to think the name could be rolled over on this campus, $45 million, $50 million campus that has incorporated all of our departments. So how does anyone even wrap their heads around something so asinine? We should not be spending another minute on this type of stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to ask you to give me the finger, this one.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Harry Bims, with donated time from Cheryl Bims, and this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, council. My name's Harry Bims. I've been a resident for Bell Haven for about 23 years now. That said, I was not born and raised in Bell Haven. I was actually born and raised in the heart of the South Side of Chicago, less than a month after the March on Washington, which gives you an idea of how old I am. Now, the organizer of that march was not Martin Luther King, rather, it was A. Philip Randolph. There's a public school not far from where I grew up named after him, and that school has a webpage documenting the national impact that A. Philip Randolph had during the Civil Rights Movement. Another public school not far from where I grew up is named after George Washington Carver. We even have a Malcolm X College on the near West Side. A nearby library is named after Thurgood Marshall. Another is named after Whitney Young. Another named after Ida B. Wells. And the Obama Presidential Center is currently being built not far from my high school. And there are many, many other examples that I could list. The point is, this is why, from my perspective, when an African-American's name goes on a public building, I believe it should be a name that has national significance. It needs to be the kind of person whose social impact would have been significant enough for my dad to write articles about their work. You see, my dad was an editor for Ebony magazine and Jet magazine during the 1960s, and frequently wrote articles documenting local people and their activities in black communities around the country. So he would write about people such as, for example, J. Ernest Wilkins Jr., just as an example, who grew up on the South Side of Chicago and graduated at age 19 with a PhD in mathematics from the University of Chicago, making him the youngest person ever to earn a PhD in any field from that university to this day. He also worked as a scientist on the Manhattan Project, and even has nuclear equations named after him. Now, that put him in a position where he could sign the letter to President Truman, asking him not to drop the bomb on Japan. So when the Oppenheimer movie, for example, failed to acknowledge his work or the work of many other African-American male and female scientists who were working on the Manhattan Project, this is a sign that significant contributors such as these should not be forgotten. To this end, my wife and I have chosen to try to remember him through a fully endowed scholarship that was established a couple of years ago, and that scholarship is helping middle-school students with a talent for math get a proper education. In summary, I believe the right thing to do, if you want someone's personal name to go on the community campus building, is to require that, A, that the person's work have impact far beyond the Bell Haven neighborhood, and B, that existing Bell Haven residents have come together to put some money behind the name. Let's say 100K, for example. So people will know that the neighborhood is serious about the name. Alternatively, other building names should be entertained that acknowledge the major contributors to the project, the way it has been done in this city in the past and in neighboring cities as well for decades. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Right, and so our next speaker will be Yasmeen.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Yasmeen Abdussami Oakley, and I come to you as one of the lead organizers for East Palo Alto for Reparations, and I'm here to lend my support to the Onetta Harris Name Continuance Project. We have been very fortunate, you know, through this whole process, that the community has really rose to the occasion, and I would like to give a special shout-out to the East Palo Alto, Bell Haven, East Menlo Park community for just rising to the occasion of letting us know all of this beautiful history that exists around this subject, the beautiful history of Onetta Harris and her impact on the whole community of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto. The amazing history that the brother just shared before I spoke is amazing, and just this opportunity is like a blessing in disguise for this wonderful history to resurface, and I hope that everyone who is listening is learning something, and they're able to make the best decision that they can and really support, even if you're not from Bell Haven. We really encourage you to dig deep into this history and help us preserve it and help it not be erased. So I would like to thank you. East Palo Alto for Reparations is having an open house at the YMCA on Friday at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be RM James.
Okay, so I apologize. I got in a little late. I wanted to support my friend Linda Jolly, and I don't know whether Linda's already spoken, and I'm not a recipient or eyeball witness to what she alleges, but she indicates to me that the Menlo Park Police Department may have, in her view, harassed her unnecessarily. And if that's the case, then I certainly hope that the police department will take her complaint very seriously. She's a serious-minded, courageous individual, who I know has lived in her RV and vehicle for a substantial amount of time. And the last thing, that she's been trying very, very, very hard to get work and employed. It's not that easy when you're a senior citizen. So anyway, this one's from Linda Jolly. And just by odd chance, you know, I have worked so hard, written some letters to the editors over the last few years, follow the reparations committee, commission here in California, the very first one that Shirley Weber put together, and now they're over 1,000-page report. I'm a strong supporter of reparations. The city of Palo Alto, where I live and where I've talked to it, I can't get them even to say that word reparations. I've wanted a committee in Palo Alto. Only Greg Tanaka, whose family was also, you know, was in the American-- his father and grandfather in the concentration camps that were despicably set up during World War II for Japanese-Americans. He's interviewed me on the topic on his weekly access show, but the rest of the council, the other six members, over several years, are really afraid even to say the word reparations. I don't know where Menlo Park is. I don't, you know, it's been years since I've spoken, usually on police practices, issues against tasers and against police canines, but I do hope that this city council is more courageous on the issue of reparations. And I, you know, I went to Bell Haven Elementary School, 74-years-old, so I know about some of the very, very rich history in East Menlo and East Palo Alto, and I hope that you will convene, if you haven't already, a Menlo Park Reparations Committee, and be forward thinkers, open-minded about figuring out what reparations are owed to members of the African-American community, Native American communities, and I thank you very much for your attention this evening.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, city clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who gave public comment this evening. We are listening to you, and we appreciate you coming before us to share your thoughts. With that, we are now moving on to public comment for our closed session, which is L, which we will be convening into at the end of our open session meeting. We're offering two opportunities tonight for public comment on the closed-session items. The second call for that public comment on closed-session items will be before adjourning to closed session when our public meeting is over. So at this time, city clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on closed-session items L1, L2, and L3?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our closed-session items, L1, Closed Session Conference for Labor Negotiations; L2, also Closed Session with Labor Negotiations; or L3, Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed-session items, L1, L2, and L3. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now moving on to E, which is our Presentations and Proclamations. We have some guests here this evening. We have one presentation, which is E1. The Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District is going to give us an update. So here to provide us with this information are Mid Penn Board Members Karen Holman, representing Ward 5, and Margaret McNiven, who represents Ward 6. So thank you so much for being here this evening, and we are excited to hear your presentation. Please.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for hearing our presentation. My name is Margaret McNiven, and I serve on the Board of Directors for the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, along with my colleague Karen Holman. The purpose of our presentation tonight is to provide you with a brief update on the district and highlight some preserves and projects that might be of interest to Menlo Park citizens. Slide. So the district's mission, which is a little, a little small to read, but basically it can be boiled down to five words. Yeah, I got it. Preserve, protect, restore, educate, and enjoy. Our mission on the coast, it also includes the protection and support for agriculture. Slide. So this is um map of the district. The boundary is roughly defined by the bay to the east, the San Mateo Coast to the west, Pacifica to the north, and Las Gatos to the south. The district is divided into seven wards, each with approximately a hundred and ten thousand constituents. And each ward is represented by one board member. So my area includes North Fair Oaks, Atherton, West Menlo Park, Redwood City, Woodside, Potola Valley, and Pescadero. And Director Holman represents the communities of East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Sunnyvale. The district has protected over seventy thousand acres of open space on the South San Francisco Peninsula. Sorry. Map, perfect. Shown here in dark green. The light green areas have also been protected by mostly by state and county parks, small areas of the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, and the rest by nonprofit land trusts, including Post, Semper Virens, and Save the Redwoods. It's quite a nice green belt for us to have. Okay, now you can move. Mid Penn is a special district created in nineteen seventy-two by Voter Initiative fifty years ago. It's funded primarily through property taxes. There are twenty-seven open space preserves, most of which are open to the public for free from sunrise to sunset. Our preserves receive about two point seven million visitors in a in the year two twenty twenty-two. Slide, please. So what I thought I would do is just show you some of the really pretty pictures that we have for just to whet your appetite and hope that you will go and enjoy them. The first one here is Windy Hill Open Space Preserve, fairly close for you guys to get to. It's a favorite of hikers, and you get there from Scarlet Boulevard or Potola Road. Next is Ravenswood Open Space Preserve. This is um your closest preserve in Menlo Park, and it's down by the bay. It is a small but remarkable preserve. It's a bird geeks paradise. Slide. Here we have sandpipers, all great things to go down and check out. And then we have an endangered, uh, let's see, it's called a salt harvest mouse. And it's endangered, which is why it's got a little tag on its ear because they're being researched. And it's enjoying eating the pickleweed. Next, trails. The Open Space District has really improved the trail system uh in the trail system. Let's see. In the preserve, they've upgraded the one, the one, uh, the one point four miles that were there and made them more environmental. As you can see, it's a boardwalk for some of the distance over the marshy lands. And there's interpretive signs. And then they also improve, added a point six mile trail, a point six mile trail from University Avenue to connect to the Bay Trail that goes to Ravenswood. So it's really fun place to go for a morning's walk. Okay, slide. Oh, back. They had a groundbreaking ceremony, and we really appreciate our partners in open space, of which Menlo Park City Council is one. So thank you. And this is the groundbreaking ceremony for that um for that trail. And you can see Cecilia, and you can also see our own Karen Holman right there. Okay, now you can move. This is the iconic Red Barn on eighty-four, Highway eighty-four, as you go over to the coast to enjoy the coast. It's a really, it's inspiring view as you drive by. Next. Here we have Montebello Open Space Preserve up on skyline, Montebello, beautiful mountain. You can see Mount Amunam in the background there, and there's about fifteen miles of trails that the bicyclists, the um hikers and the horses can can enjoy. Slide. Russian Ridge, favorite. In spring, you can go enjoy the wildflowers up there. Really beautiful, and um you can also in see amazing birds up there, the raptors. And there have been golden eagle sightings up there, so that's exciting. Next. At Russian Ridge, we have a nature center on the Alpine Pond. And this is for schoolchildren to come and learn about the animals and the birds and the beasts up there. Slide. I like to think of this as someone's kitchen. This, this is the Aloney Grinding Stones right there near the Alpine Pond. And where the Alonies used to sit around and chat and grind their flour from oaks, from acorns. Next. Thornwood Open Space Preserve, another small but mighty preserve on Highway eighty-four as you're going up the hill. Uh, there's a lovely lake there for a waterfowl, and you can take your dog there so long as they stay on leash. Next. And that's it. I hope you enjoyed those. It, they really are a pleasure to go and visit. And I will now turn it over to Karen Holman.
Thank you. It's really a pleasure to, um, and a privilege, frankly, to be uh sitting on the board of the Open Space District. We, as directors, elected directors, are like you all, public servants. And so it is uh our work and our effort uh to always remember that it's public service. We get to do this work because of public support, because of the measure that was passed. And as Margaret had indicated, the organization is now fifty years old, so we've been doing that for some time. I'm going to talk about just a few of the projects. And um we are really keen on and focus on the animals, the wildlife that exist in all of these twenty-seven preserves. This is a feature photograph because this is our state bird, the California quail. Next. So um while this may look like a lot of fun, and indeed it is, it's also a heck of a lot of work. This is the Cloverdale Ranch Acquisition, which is a sixty-three hundred acre property, and it took over twenty years. It took over twenty years uh to get this to come into reality. You can see the property is broken up into three acquisition areas. It's a large property uh at the coast, so you can imagine that it provides significant habitat to an array of plants, birds, insects, wildlife, including state and federally listed threatened and endangered species like the San Francisco garter snake and the California red-legged frog. It also includes locally and regionally significant creeks, which provide important fish habitat. And it has the potential to provide important local and regional trail development that promotes visitation to Butano and Pigeon Point State Parks through the uh California Coastal Trail. We're also big on trail, trail connections and providing uh public access. This is just one view of the Cloverdale Ranch Open Space Preserve. And my perspective is this one particular photo and no particular photo could ever do justice to this property. It is really a gorgeous, very special property and worth the twenty years investment of time. Next. Uh, something else that you all are familiar with, sadly, is that uh we've had wildfire situations, and we had had to develop wildfire resiliency programs. This is uh again, another part of our responsibility, uh, not only for public safety, but also for habitat. Native Americans used to have prescribed fires, as we now call them. This photo in particular shows a Mid Penn staff person helping uh the uh helping Cal Fire during the twenty twenty CZU lightning fire, lightning complex fires. This was uh helping to hold the line at Old Hall, Old Hall Road in La Honda. Mid Penn staff, I can't say enough about them and their uh ability and willingness to put themselves literally on the front line. Their work in in the CZU fire in particular was really remarkable and incredible in helping that and keeping it on that side. Mid Penn actively assisted Cal Fire's response uh to the complex fires. And this wildfire underscored the need for Mid Penn to enhance its fuel reduction efforts while protecting biodiversity. Next. You can see by this slide, um, it's a complex slide, but the main point of this is to for you to understand to some extent that there are four parts uh to this wildfire management plan. One is vegetation management plan, which addresses creation and maintenance of fuel reduction areas for ecosystem health, fuel breaks, and defensive spaces, uh, meaning clearance away from structures and such to uh create um uh an easier, an easier way and to keep fire from spreading. And we do this by using vegetation management techniques that include manual and mechanical removal of vegetation and use of herbicides. Then there's a prescribed fire plan that I just briefly mentioned, which addresses the methods and implementation of prescribed fire to manage fuel and ecosystem health. And then we create also uh resource advisor maps for each preserve and other managed lands, uh, which provide information on existing conditions, infrastructure, and resource constraints. These would aid, or these do aid, uh, partners like Cal Fire in their fire suppression work and identify sensitive resource areas that need additional protection from uh potential fire damage or to fire suppression activities. We can't just go out there and just do fire suppression activities everywhere and anywhere as we might want to uh or might seem obvious to just prevent fires because we do have valuable ecosystems that we have to protect as well and that we do that also for the public's good. And also, um, we have a monitoring uh plan that provides a framework for recording pre can, pre-project conditions and vegetation treatment response and fuel and fuels inventories to inform future adaptive management techniques. And one thing to highlight are the dual goals of Mid Penn's wildfire program. As I'd mentioned, it's like while few reduction work uh to reduce wildfire risk to the public is critical, and indeed it is. Mid Penn also utilizes this work to enhance biodiversity. Habitats of California are fire adaptive and in some cases fire dependent. So this program helps to ensure the health of our local habitats and helps them to adapt to the strains of climate change. We call this ecologically sensitive vegetation management. And then we also, one of the things also that we do is we provide access. And so one of these, uh, one of the means to do that is by, of course, trails. The Parisma to the Sea Trail, and we'll get to the larger picture here in in the next slide, but the Parisma to the Sea Trail is envisioned to be a roughly fifteen mile regional trail connecting Parisma Creek, Redwoods Open Space Preserve, which if you haven't been to it, it is premier. It is really just one of the most gorgeous of all the ones that we we do have uh in our portfolio um to the San Mateo County coast. This trail will create a critical east-west link in the regional trail network from the Bay Area Ridge Trail to the California Coastal Trail and will ultimately become a significant portion of the Bay to the Sea Trail, which is currently uh being studied by POST or Peninsula Open Space Trust, as you would also know it. And it will encompass forty miles of continuous, forty miles of continuous east-west regional trails connecting the San Francisco Bay to the ocean. This study that POST is conducting is to evaluate the potential for a new trail, trail connection, parking area, and rail, uh, trailhead. The study area for the Parisma to see to the Sea Trail connection, which is about five miles south of downtown Half Moon Bay, is shown here with the purple arrow, arrow. The Bay Area Ridge Trail alignment is shown in peach. Don't know if you can make that out really, but you have slides also at your, at your places. The coastal uh trail is shown in orange. The yellow line shows the existing trails within Parisma that may become part of the Parisma to the Sea Trail. And then the parking area is shown in the lower left with a uh purple uh P. Then the larger scale trail that we are uh, we will be incorporating, the Parisma to the Sea, is the Bay to the Sea Trail. And on this map, you see the larger Bay to the Sea Trail Network, where Parisma to the Sea Trail is envisioned to comprise the western segment of that. On the eastern side, the hope is to leverage a portion of the Dunbarton Rail Corridor right-of-way to help enable bike, bicycle, and pedestrian uses. And we're hoping you can have a voice in help supporting that. One of the branches is envisioned to pass through Johnson Ranch and Half Moon Bay. Another aspect of our work is mountain lion. Look at that guy, uh, is mountain lion human interaction study. We're in a three-year study and have collared a total of twenty-three mountain lions. The Puma Project, as it's known, is utilizing spatial data from the collars to add, to assess factors, including public trail use, habitat type, and fuel management activities influencing human and mountain lion interactions. In addition, behavior modification techniques have been utilized with five individual mountain lions to determine if these methods can encourage mountain lions to better avoid high-use trails when humans are present to avoid potential human mountain lion conflict. Those are just some of our projects and some of the areas that we cover. You can learn more about all of these and more. There are again twenty-seven preserves. It's a very easy uh website to navigate. It's openspace.org, easy to remember. And I hope you're taking full advantage uh of the uh access to these, to these preserves. I also wanted to introduce Josh Hug, uh, who's here. He's the uh Mid Penn Government Affairs Specialist, and uh thank him for putting together these images and helping with the presentation. So thank you very much for your time. I know you have a lot of work to do. So thank you for taking time for this. And again, I hope you're taking advantage of access to these preserves.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holman and Ms. McNiven and and for you, I can't remember your name, but we're so uh thankful that you came to educate all of us on these amenities that are right in our backyards. I think at this time, City Clerk Karen, can we please open it up for a public comment on the presentation that we just heard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public would like to provide comment on item E one, the presentation from Mid Penn, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our presentation item E one. And our first speaker will be Eduardo.
Hi, uh, thanks for um letting me speak. So um I, we, our family has been using some of these spaces for, for a long time. So we're very grateful to the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space for this. I would like to call attention to the la, one of the last slides about the um Bay to um to Sea Park because that area, uh, the one that goes through the Dunbarton Corridor, through the Sumtrams Because that area, the one that goes through the Dunbarton Corridor, through the Sambtrans right-of-way, is, is extremely valuable, in my opinion, to the discussions we have been having about making the Bellhaven area and the North First Oaks area more climate resilient. That space is the one that is just behind Bellhaven and crossing into the, the newer developments in Constitution Drive and Jefferson Drive. It's, it's just wonderful space. With a bit of imagination, you can visualize that as being a very green space that connects a number of communities together. It might take a number of years, but I think it's totally worth our, our collective energy to try to make it happen. I think it would be worth every single ounce of energy to make it happen and our, our kids would, would enjoy it. So just thanks very much for the MidPeninsula Regional Open Space and for listening.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our next speaker will be Jackie Sebrin.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, good. So I just tuned into the council meeting a little bit late, but I just want to say how awesome I think it would be to utilize that space. If I think I understand it correctly, like where the Dunbarton Rail Corridor runs through Bellhaven. Like I have long wanted to see that used as pedestrian bike trails. So I am like wholeheartedly behind this effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Pillegrino and Ms. Sebrin for your comments. And at this time, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions for the folks that are here tonight. Yes, Ms. Door.
I just have to say, thank you for being here. I love the open spaces and I think it's, they are some of the treasures that make living in Menlo Park so special. And so thank you for all the work that you do in your public service and so excited to continue in celebrating and enjoying the parks.
Thank you, well said. And with that, thank you again so much for being here this evening and we wish you great success in your service.
Thank you very much for making time for us. And if you have any questions later, we're happy to answer those too. So thank you so much.
I'll echo that.
Okay, so now that we are all inspired to go outside, we'll continue our indoor work with F, which is our advisory body vacancies and appointment. We have one item, which is F1, consider applicants and make an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And to introduce this item, we have our city clerk, Judy Heron, please.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So again, the item before the city council is to make an appointment for an unexpected vacancy on our Park and Recreation Commission. This four-week recruitment allotted us to have four applicants this evening for the city council to choose for the one vacancy with a term ending April 30th of 2024. I will be taking nominations verbally from the city council in order of commonly used first names. The candidate that receives a majority of the nominations will be appointed. If there is a tie, multiple rounds of this nomination and voting will occur. And that concludes my introduction at this time. Happy to open it up to public comment or answer any clarifying questions the city council may have.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. I think we'll begin with public comments, so please.
Thank you. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our vacancy item, which is F1, consider applicants, make an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Park and Recreation Commission. If participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our vacancy item, item F1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And I just want to start by saying thank you to the applicants who have put their names forward. We are truly blessed with amazing quality residents who want to give service to the community. So we only have one opening now, but our annual commissioner recruitment will be happening in February. And we'll make the appointments in April.
Correct.
So this is a unforeseen vacancy. This term only runs till April. So I believe, is that right, City Clerk Karen?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so if you don't get this spot, it might be a blessing. And you can apply again for a four-year term in the spring of, anyway. So usually we have been kind of just going straight to the voting, but I wanted to make sure my colleagues, if they want to say anything prior to voting or nominating, or whatever we want to call it, to allow them that opportunity. Okay, I think then we will, City Clerk Karen, can you please let us know what we need to do here?
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I will be going down the dais again by most commonly used first name. I will ask you for one name of the candidate you wish to have appointed to this vacancy on the Park and Recreation Commission. The four candidates are on the screen. It is Kathleen O'Connell, Shawnee Podell, Kate Wessel and Brian Westcott. And so with that, I will start with city council member Nash.
Thank you. And again, echoing that we had excellent candidates, Kate Wessel.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Thank you. City Councilmember Combs.
Shawnee Podell.
Thank you. City Councilmember Door.
Kate Wessel.
Thank you. And Mayor Willison?
Again, wanted to thank everybody. I, I just wanted to acknowledge that there are some topics that the Parks and Rec Commission discussed, which might be a little more controversial than others, particularly around pickleball and tennis. And so for that reason, I'm going to go with someone that is not, doesn't appear to be invested in either, which is Kate Wessel. So I, I appreciate everyone applying. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would like to add a comment on, on there. I do think it's, it's important to be transparent and that we got some emails specifically disparaging the candidacy of one of, of the people here. Well, I got it. So, and I, I would just say to the community going forward, I think it's important to advocate positively for the person that you think should be in the position. And it's probably not necessary, and I think actually hurts the cause that you are advocating for to, to, I think, speak disparagingly of, of, of others candidacy who you think may disagree with you on an issue. And, and I do think it was important, since you raised the issue of, that you wanted to go with someone who seemed agnostic or neutral as it relates to the pickleball issue. And I did get it. I know, I can say that I got an email, as it relates specifically to the pickleball issue and where people thought a candidate might be on that issue, and I found it really disappointing. And it did not endear me to, or it did not, let's say, increase or enhance my thoughts of the pickleball community, that some in that community thought that that was the right way to engage.
And I just wanted to also encourage positive advocacy. And this was a challenging decision for me. I've gotten to know several of the applicants and I highly respect their, their thinking and their community-minded approach. This was not influenced by any email that I received and I, I take that my decision as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I totally hear you on that, wasn't influenced, but obviously you did get an email. You, you mentioned the pickleball issue, so.
Well, I also am familiar with, I'm familiar with a lot of the applicants and their interest in certain topics that may. Anyway, I, I think we've said what we were going to say. Anyway, thank you. Councilmember Door?
Yes, I was grateful to have conversations with several of the applicants directly. And I'm excited that this is an opportunity to fill a vacancy that just goes until April. And so we'll be having this conversation again very shortly and excited to have continued leadership from the community involved. And I'll say for me, having, getting to have conversations with folks who are interested in applying is really helpful. So thank you to those folks who reached out. Thanks.
Okay, so thank you all again. Again, we're grateful that folks want to be involved. And we encourage everyone who applied to continue to voice their thoughts, reach out to us. And that doesn't mean anyone can't advocate for anything that they want. So we just make the best decisions we can with the information we have. All right, we are going to move on now.
Real quick, Mayor Willison, I just want to state for the record by acclamation, the city council is appointing Kate Wessel to the unexpected vacancy for the Park Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say that I was, as with all these candidates, but particularly impressed with Ms. Wessel's background. And I look forward to her getting involved in the city. So looking at the positives. Okay, we're now going to move on to the consent calendar, which is G. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. To introduce the consent calendar, we have Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay. And we mentioned that there would be an update to G5, and Mr. Stoltay is going to provide that update now.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff would like to make a revision to the second reading of the Streeteres Outdoor Dining Areas Ordinance. And it is to page G-5.10. And it is to better clarify the fee structure as we realize certain language was creating confusion between the ordinance and the resolution.
Are there any questions?
And then I will read the changes into the record. They're pretty short. So the first change is in Exhibit A, in Attachment A. And it is to section 13.30.030 Permit Application. We are striking the second sentence in the, in the second paragraph.
Would it be possible to put this on the screen so that we can follow along for those that don't have it at their fingertips?
Sure. Just one moment. Oh, oh Judy, I'll share a screen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so you can see the first edit is to section on permit application. And we are just striking that, that middle sentence there. And then the second edit is to the following section, fees. We are striking prior to permit issuance. And we are adding into this sentence an annual permit renewal fee. This is all in an effort to clarify fees between the ordinance and the resolution that you'll consider later tonight.
And I'll, I'll add that these changes are consistent with what was set forth in the resolution for fees that's before you this evening. But it was, it was incomplete as to the proposed fees in the resolution. So these changes better sync up the fees and also allow the council, when we discuss the fees resolution, to make certain modifications to the extent the council wants to waive or delay the imposition of certain fees at the outset of the permit program.
So is the permit still valid for three years? It's just that the application was the wrong terminology? Or is the permit, the initial term no longer three years?
We, we can actually discuss that in the, in the item on the regular agenda.
I see, so that we're not specifying in, in the ordinance then? Okay, thank you for the clarification. Are there other questions related to D, clarifying questions related to the proposed changes in D5? Okay, then I will go ahead and open up for public comment on the consent calendar. So I just want to clarify for members of the public, we do have three agenda items tonight related to kind of downtown eateries, streets and whatnot. This is the second reading of the ordinance that we passed last time, which enables further actions. This is an enabling ordinance that was just getting cleaned up. H1 is about the fees and the design guidelines. And then H2 is about the closure or not of Santa Cruz Avenue at this time. So just so as you, I think we might have some folks here preparing to make public comment. I just want to help you out so that you make that public comment at the appropriate agenda item. So City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on any of our closed session items, G1, approving the preferred concept for Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing Design. G2, an MOU with San Mateo County Transportation Authority to complete landscaping at 101 and Willow Road. G3, a professional services agreement for plan review services for the Willow Village project. G4, the city's response to a grand jury report for accessory dwelling units. Or G5, the Streeteres Ordinance adoption. If participating virtually, please engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. All right, and our first speaker will be Pam Jones with donated time from Marlene Sentoio. And this will be on item G2 related to Willow Road and Highway 101 landscaping.
Good evening, Mayor Willison, Vice Mayor Taylor, council members Combs, Nash, Door, City Manager Murphy and staff. My name is Pam D. Jones, resident of District 1, the Bellhaven neighborhood. I am active in several organizations and speak for myself only. I want to express my gratitude for Councilmember Combs and Vice Mayor Taylor for requesting a status report at a March meeting on the Willow Road 101 interchange. There are multiple layers of significant problems with the 101 interchange project. It was highly controversial in the 1950s and remains so today. This is part of my history. When the freeway was first being considered and built, it was referred to as the concrete highway by the NAACP. And I remember it going in. The, today, it was about increasing, then it was about increasing the racial divide, and now it's about environmental justice. This is quite consistent with how, how our history continues to show up today. In exchange for a four-lane overpass, an eight-lane concrete road is the entrance to District 1. And it's not much better as an entrance to District 2, where on the immediate north side off-ramp, there is a, you're able to see into the second floor of the housing units there. At the May 7th, 2013 council meeting, the council gave a nod to design options suggested by the agencies working on the interchange. And I'm not going to name all of the agencies at this time. In mid-2017, the first step in redesigning the Willow Road 101 interchange was for Caltrans to clearcut 60-year-old redwood trees that had a possible life expectancy to 800 or to 2,000 years. The project was completed in 2019 and soon after the San Mateo 101 Express Lanes projects began. According to the staff report, the landscaping phase was also required to be scheduled after the completion of the San Mateo US 101 Express Lanes. to be scheduled after the completion of the San Mateo US 101 Express Lanes Project. The question, one of the many questions I have, but one of them is, was this the San Mateo County Authority, Transportation Authority's decision? Whose decision was it to spend funds for Measure A, the sales tax, in a way in which I wonder if we have actually lost money to the freeway project that could have been used for the overpass? And I'm also not sure how a pay to drive in an express lane was required to be completed prior to ensuring the health and well-being of the residents affected by the traffic. In 2019, a community meeting in the Environmental Quality Commission made recommendations on the preferred plan. Apparently those plans were put on hold rather than completing them at this time. So here we are in 2023, being told it will take three years more for any construction to begin. Now it's 2026. Three more years for plantings to be established. And who knows how long it's going to take for the trees to be anywhere close to what we had when they, when the land there was clear cut. So what this sounds like to me is it's actually taking 12 years to fix the problem that Caltrans, Caltrans and other agencies created, none of which are taking responsibility for the harm done to residents. Logically, Caltrans could have hired the appropriate specialists to design their replacement plants, irrigation lines, electrical connections, et cetera, while they were planning the construction of the overpass. Think logically is the key word. The current method is, is not logical nor is it efficient. So I ask who is responsible for creating a health hazard without immediate remedy for residents? Who is ultimately responsible? We know that it is our elected officials at the state level that have leverage over Caltrans and the other state agencies. County elected officials serve on the board of the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. They have a responsibility. And this is about every elected in every agency that had any part of the role in the overpass from its inception to today. Whether or not they're in office, the decision was made by them in some way, or at least the agency that they served on. Again, this is about having the responsibility for, to ensure the health, well-being and quality of life of their constituents. This, the comments that I have been making fully explains why the 101 Willow Road landscaping is truly an environmental justice issue. Because justice was not done to the residents. Now I'm starting with you because you know, you, you had to participate in it in some way. And you're kind of like the, the, the agency, the electeds of the last resort. Because you're still taking responsibility and doing the best you can to ensure that we do have an overpass that makes our city as beautiful as it can be. But this is also the place where the discussion starts and that it will get to the higher levels, which is what the, the intention is with all of this. So in the meantime, I would ask that the city do whatever it can to expedite the project. And if there are any distractors, if there's any challenges, to please let the public know immediately. Because I don't think the public is going to want to wait any longer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items G1 through G5. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Ms. Jones, for your comment. Following up with staff, I know we discussed this, was it in March? I can't remember. And we all expressed support in expediting this. And having read the staff report, it looked very similar to what it looked like in terms of timing from the last time we saw it. So wanting to see why that is, and then also if you have any response to Ms. Jones and kind of how, how it was that we got where we are when this project was in the works for so long.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wilson. Hugh Lautz, Assistant Public Works Director for Transportation. And first of all, I guess they want to appreciate the comments from Ms. Jones and, and understand that there is a much larger, longer history that she's speaking to than just about the specific thing before you tonight. Obviously, and that's very important, I think, to acknowledge and, and for us to be working on as we go forward. As it relates to the specifics of this landscaping phase of the current project, one thing I want to clarify, and I feel like I've heard this comment a couple of times. So it makes me think that maybe my staff report was a little unclear and I apologize for that. So we are about to enter a phase where we'll be, when this is approved, this MOU is approved, we will receive funding from the Transportation Authority, we will begin design work. That'll take about a year and then we'll move into the construction, if you will, the planting phase of the work. So that'll start in about a year or so there. That needs to be bid out. So it'll be a little bit after that. But there won't, it won't be three years till plants come in. There'll be a three year period after that of plant establishment. So, you know, we're a little more than a year probably away from planting beginning. And then, you know, there'll be a period of time where those plants are installed and then established.
Can you elaborate what plant establishment means for us non-landscapers?
Sorry, it means the, the plants are being watered so that they, they live.
So is the three years, is the three years to get them to looking nice and like what we want?
So like when you put the plant in the ground and then the roots need to establish themselves so that they can just sort of thrive and without, you know, sort of regular, and it's frequent watering. And I'm, I am not a landscape architect, so you can see I've reached about the end of my knowledge there.
Thank you, Hugh. And Nikki Nagai, Deputy City Manager, I'm also not a landscape architect. But just to, to clarify the plant establishment component. So often when we put a project out to bid that has landscaping elements, we require the entity doing the planting to do what's called plant establishment. So that helps make sure that the plants do live for a longer period than would be the case if they weren't watered regularly. And so it's that plant establishment period where we're setting up some regulations so that the contractor that installs the plants comes back and helps do maintenance to ensure that they're thriving over time.
But for us laypeople who just want greenery and to see that area filled, there's going to be something in the ground.
A year and a half.
Okay. And has that been accelerated since the, you first came before us with this?
So, no. I mean, the, the period of time that it takes, I think the schedule that we gave you when we did the informational item update is, is roughly the same. What I can say is like, we will do everything within our power to move it as quickly as possible. But there will be periods of, you know, design work. It'll take Caltrans and other parties reviewing that work and then, you know, finalizing the design and, and one thing and another. So it, it's not something where, you know, there's a lot of room to cut into that schedule. But certainly we'll do everything that we can and, and is with our power to do that. And really what's within our power is in the design phase. And then the project gets handed over actually to the Transportation Authority to do the implementation. That may actually accelerate work a little bit. So it won't be done directly by Caltrans, but by staff who are a little bit closer to the issue. So we think that'll help as well in terms of moving it quickly from design into planting.
All right, I want to allow my colleagues an opportunity to ask any questions or to comment really on any of the consent calendar items. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, so I will comment on, on this item and then I have a question about another item. And so, thank you, Mr. Lautz and Ms. Nagai for, for the comments and for making yourself available to Vice Mayor Taylor and I, who were formerly on the now no longer existing Exchange, Willow Exchange Subcommittee. And so, and I do appreciate, to, to your point, Ms. Jones was talking about a long history of which is far beyond this project or current events, I think. But the issue is when sort of current events rhyme with that disappointing history is where, where I think we, you know, get, you know, even more so concerned. And, and the fact here that you have a, a project that was about, let's be clear, as quickly and as efficiently as possible, getting people off the freeway in essentially through districts one and two. For District One, in a lot of cases, getting them to Dumbarton. And for District Two, getting them to Pell Altone West Side. And so that, that project and its desire to get, you know, people off the freeway as quickly as possible was prioritized much, in much greater degree of, of what should have been a small part of that, which was sort of landscaping and some greenery for the sort of, you know, concrete, even more concrete that we were left with. That again, gets people to the East Bay and gets people to Pell Altone West Mill Park very quickly. And what we have been stuck with is a mound of dirt that has collected debris. And, and, and we will be stuck with it for years now. And I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking in your direction, but not to you, because I know that you don't, you don't own this. I own this more than you own this, to, to be clear as an elected official. But I, I do think that that's, you know, again, that, that just makes this, this, this very, very frustrating. And I know that Mill Park is not the lead agency here. And, 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 and that is, is a, is a complication. But then there becomes this issue, you know, do what gets, you know, in my mind, I'm going to be looking at what, what sort of, you know, gets resolved first or what, what gets completed first. Is it going to be this project or is it going to be the quiet zone? Like, right, talking about projects that come sort of out of nowhere and, and get, you know, immediately on the, on the speed track. Again, which is something that rhymes with a very disappointing history. And at some point that that has to be acknowledged. And, and what we're talking about here is again, like, you know, not a lot, right? As, as far as some landscaping and some trees. I do think, now that I've made that, there, there are a couple of things to point out. One, one of the early issues in this project was that the thinking that we only had, I think around 1.5 million. And that there was efforts to apply for and receive grant money. And, and so that, you know, that, that certainly had an issue with slowing this project down. We ultimately didn't get that grant money. And I think it was the Vice Mayor and I who was like, said, well, forget that grant money because we're going to be here forever waiting for that grant money. And let's just focus on the money we got. It is good to know that like, like upon further analysis or review, we'll actually have probably a couple of million more for that base plan than we, we originally thought we would have. And so that is a good, a good development, which I think is worth noting. The other thing I think it is important to note is that this project does not include any landscaping or planting along either Pierce or Bay. And Caltrans is taking no responsibility for, for any of that planting or any of that landscaping that was removed as part of this very mature, that was removed as part of this, this project or the overpass off ramp project. My understanding from Mr. Lautz and Ms. Nagai is that the city will take it upon itself to do some landscaping and planting in those areas along, along the freeway as part of or in tandem with this, this project. And that is something that, in a sense, the city will be the lead agency on. So I, I do think it's important to, to make note of, of those two things. And sorry, this is about the longest I've ever talked on, something on the consent calendar. And, and then I just want a question, and so that, that's all I have for, for G2. And I, I don't know if the Vice Mayor has additional comments he wants to make. But before that, I just had a question about G3. Should I be recused from G3? And this is to the city attorney and the city manager. But maybe while you guys are thinking about that, we want to see if someone else wants to, to make additional comments.
Vice Mayor Taylor? I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Combs. Thank you. I appreciate everything you said and there is no reason for me to, to repeat it. Thank you.
I, I was hoping you were going to thank him for longer so I could think more about this.
I think Councilmember Dor has something to say. See you have a moment more.
Sure, I, I want to thank also my fellow councilmembers on the dais. I was also concerned to see the length of time that is, is scheduled for this project. But in understanding a little bit better about how long it takes to work with Caltrans and these other departments and these steps that are needed. I appreciate that the team is doing what they can and eager, if there are moments where it comes back to us to say, what are we prioritizing? This project is really important for, for addressing air pollution as well as sound pollution. And so I'm eager to make sure that this is of the discretionary moments we have elevated. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your comments. Just following up on that to city staff. Will we be getting updates or if you reach a moment where you are juggling priorities or a resource constraint? Will you be coming back for us for direction? When will we see you next on this topic?
Yeah, we, we can definitely bring back updates about the progress of the design. I think when we have actual kind of design milestones, we can share those with you at that time, probably through informational updates. And of course, I think, as, as always, if there are kind of questions about prioritizing time, those would come back.
Yeah, I think if there is a moment where you are grappling between workload and trying to figure out what to prioritize, there's definitely an appetite to prioritize this project and please come to us or just go for it. Thank you. So City Attorney Doherty, did we give you enough time to look into what was asked?
Councilmember Combs, I, I, I think that it's unlikely that the professional review services would have a financial impact on a source of income for you, which is your employer, which is the applicant for the Willow Village project. But out of abundance of caution, because I don't have time to review that in detail, you might consider recusing yourself from that one item.
Totally fair. And sorry, I just, I would have asked you beforehand. I just sort of was reading through and noticed it myself. And yeah, I, I don't think my, my vote is going to be a deciding factor. So I, I think I, I agree with your assessment.
Okay, so with that, I think we'll separate G3 from the rest of the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and move items G1, G2, G4 and G5. G5, including the revisions laid out by Mr. Stoltay earlier in this discussion. So is there a second to move those four items on consent?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Willison and a second by Vice Mayor Taylor to approve the consent calendar with updates to item G5 and excluding item G3. And with that, I will ask the city council. You should be able to vote on your dais screens. Great, thank you. And so the motion passes unanimously.
All right, is there a motion not from Councilmember Combs for G3?
I move G3.
A second? Oh, we can do this on the computer. Okay. Oh, it looks like actually Vice Mayor Taylor beat you to the motion. And now Councilmember Nash is seconding.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Nash to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment with the professional services agreement with WC3 for improvement plan review services for the Willow Village project in the amount of $220,000. If there's no further city council question or discussion, please proceed to voting. All right, and the motion passes with City Council, City Councilmember Combs recused.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We are now moving on to H, which is our regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is H1, adopt resolutions to approve Streeterie design standards and Streeterie fees. Adopt Resolutions to Approve Streetery Design Standards and Streetery Fees. And to introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Stephen Stoltay. Mr. Stoltay.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. We are going to start actually with Ms. Kirsten Heinz of HDL Companies. And she is going to walk us through the first half of the presentation on streetery design standards. I will finish up with fees. And we will briefly give you some background and highlight design standards, fee structure, including a variety of business assistance that's embedded in the streetery program. And ultimately seek your adoption of two resolutions, one for the design standards and one for the fee structure. So with that, I will pass it off to Ms. Heinz.
Hi, good evening. So this is Kirsten Heinz speaking. I'm with HDL Companies, the city's economic development consultant. So just a few weeks ago, on August 15th, the council voted unanimously to introduce the outdoor dining ordinance and then requested at the same time, some additional information on streetery design standards and the fee structure. So I'll go over the design standards and the request that was made by council a few weeks ago was to review visibility and height requirements that don't impact safety standards. So next slide, please. So the, the standard, the streetery design standards were built through a collaborative effort. HDL Companies facilitated, expert facilitated conversations with staff from planning, building, public works and transportation, as well as the Menlo Park Fire District, to create the design standards that regulate the form, design, safety, and maintenance of streeteries, including the permit application, submittal process, design standard elements like location, platforms, enclosures, and overhead structures, standards for furnishings and fixtures, including things like placement, and then safety and accessibility operations and maintenance standards. Next slide, please. Thank you. So like I said, there were, we were, we reviewed, the staff reviewed the design standards for things that could be reduced that don't impact safety. One of the first things that was updated was wind barriers. This included reducing or increasing, sorry, the maximum height from six feet to 10 feet above the platform to align with the maximum height of overhead structures. And this, the height of overhead structures, I'll go into it in a minute too. But this is, aligns with the California Building Code standards. And then again, relating to wind barriers, they, there was a requirement for them to be transparent, but to allow businesses some more discretion. They are allowed to be non-transparent above the 36 inches for things like privacy, as long as it doesn't conflict with overall visibility standards. And then, like I just mentioned, overhead structures, the minimum height is, was updated to seven feet, six inches. And this aligns with the California Building Code standards. And then maximum height is 10 feet. And next slide, please. And so one of the other aspects of the design standards that were updated is the table seating and chairs. So there was a requirement, or at least a recommended table size and setup with furnishings and fixtures, but that was removed and it just focuses on accessibility now. And there was change to the lighting requirement. So the minimum height was previously 10 feet. It was reduced down to seven feet, six inches to align with the California Building Code minimum height and the overhead structures height. Additionally, SCFM design standards, they did a review of existing outdoor dining. One of their recommendations was to reduce that minimum height of lighting. And we don't have, in the design standards, there's not a maximum height. And this is to help accommodate workaround for things like trees and other existing features around the streeteries. And then the last change that was made was in regard to plants and planters. So the height for planters is a range of 30 to 36 inches. And the combined maximum height for plants plus planters is 48 inches. So plants can be maximum of 12 to 18 inches, depending on the size of the planter. Most of the planters, at least those cement planters that are around a lot of the, those original Santa Cruz, street cafe parklets, those are 30 inches in height. So they could have plants that are up to 18 inches in height. But the exception to this is at intersections or mid-block crosswalks. And the maximum combined height at these locations would be 36 inches. And this is to ensure maximum visibility of the retail establishments into and out of the parklet. So it's not blocking vehicle, bicycle, or pedestrian visibility. And I'll go through just some other key features of the guidelines. So one, the templates, or there are templates in the design standards. There are six templates for parallel and diagonal parking spaces, parklets with combined sidewalks, parklets and sidewalk cafes at curb extensions, and for parklets enclosed streets. And these are just to help streamline review for new applicants. And then there are barrier requirements, so 250 pound force impact rating. The, like I said, 30 to 36 inches in height. And materials of the barriers can be concrete, wood, or steel, planters, or perforated steel railings. They're required to have reflectors on them at corners facing travel lanes too. For platforms, they must be made of durable, fire-resistant, and weather-resistant materials. The examples in the design standards include naturally durable wood, preservative-treated wood, or other engineered materials that are good for outside conditions. And they have to be flush with sidewalks and provide for drainage, ventilation, and rodent proofing. And then, like the last bullet says, everything has to be constructed to California Building Code and Americans with Disability Act, a platform included. And then for overhead structures, they are permitted, but they might require a longer review just to make sure that they're meeting safety and visibility standards. And the exception to overhead structures is when a parklet is at an intersection. And then the barriers can't be higher than 36 inches. Next slide, please. And then just some additional guidelines. So furnishing and fixtures, they have to be made of fire-resistant, commercial-grade materials, weighted down for wind protection. They have to meet ADA accessibility in terms of things like layout and providing accessibility for seating. And portable heaters are allowed, but they can't be inside of tents, canopies, or membrane structures, particularly things like combustible materials. Gas heaters specifically are not permitted on or under combustible materials, but electric heaters could be under overhead structures. Chaining and umbrellas, they have to be at least 80 inches above the platform and, or the sidewalk, but they just can't block sightlines, so they would be reviewed for that. And then signage is permitted on the parklets. It just has to meet the city sign design guidelines, like can't be illuminated. And the max area of the signage is six feet, unless it's at a corner, then it's nine feet total square feet. And then I will pass it on to, back to Mr. Stoltay to discuss the streetery fees.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. So there are two types of fees, and I'd like to define them before we get, get into the rest of the presentation. The first is the streetery permit application fee. This is a fee that offsets the city's costs of the permit administration. We used other fees that the city charges as proxies to set the rates for these fees. Like, for example, the administrative fee for outdoor dining on private property was a good proxy for this permit fee because we believe there's a similar amount of administrative effort that will go into review here. We, as you'll see, as we, we get into this a little later, there is a proposed three-year permit, initial three-year permit term that can be modified by council, as you'll see in the resolution, followed by annual renewals at a lower rate. And then the fees would begin for new applicants starting in January 1st of 2025. This is an addition based on council feedback at the last session where you directed us to consider not only existing outdoor uses, but potentially new food establishments that want to join the streeteries program. And then the second type of fee is the streetery annual encroachment lease fee. This is based on a cost per square foot for use of the public right-of-way or public parking spaces. And the total here varies based on the actual square footage of the streetery. These fees, as proposed, would be charged for all applicants starting in January of 2025. So this chart gives you a quick overview of the fee amounts. You'll see the initial permit fee for parklet-style streeteries is $1,725. For sidewalk cafes that don't encroach into the street, it's $810. That is based on the cost of a major encroachment fee, so we had a proxy for that one as well. The annual encroachment lease fee is at a current amount proposed at $4.24 cents per square foot. We will discuss this a little more on a later slide. And then the permit renewal for the actual permit fees is set at a flat rate of $250 a year. And that reflects the lower administrative costs of reviewing things like insurance. And, you know, staff doesn't actually have to review the parklet design at the renewal years. To give you a comparison of where Menlo Park is with other cities with outdoor dining programs, you'll see that at the proposed rates, we would be the third highest in San Mateo County on this list. Redwood City and Burlingame charge higher fees than we do. This information was previously presented as well. Okay, this is new information, and I'll walk you through this chart. There are fee options here. We received feedback at the last session and we returned with additional data on fees. So the first column lists the type of fee. The second column is the full average retail rent per month. So based on a database we have access to for retail rent data, we know that it's approximately $4.24 per square foot. And that's charged per month over a year. And these are the totals. In bold, you'll see that, you know, the total fee amount would be over $20,000 for the initial permit and then that lease fee for the use of the space. In the next column, you will see that this is our proposed rate. It's a discounted rate, it's $4.24 a square foot as well, but we're applying it for the whole year. It's significantly discounted from the average retail rent. And you'll see there's a, there's a pretty significant discount there if you add up total initial permanent lease fee. It's just over $3,200. We're also presenting a third option tonight, and it is an increased rate at $8.50. It's approximately double the previously proposed rate. And you'll see that that's still, when you add up our initial permit fees and our lease fees, still puts us below Redwood City and Burlingame as well. Just to note, Redwood City, for example, uses a square, a cost per square foot that's just over $10. Okay, there are three forms of business assistance built into the streeteries program. The first was a review that we commissioned SCFM Design Studio to do and review all the existing parklets. They compared current parklets against our proposed streetery design standards and issued recommendations. We provided this information at no cost to all of the current outdoor food establishments with outdoor uses. The next is the discounted fees, especially for our proposed encroachment lease fees, that they are set at a significantly lower rate than the average retail rent. And then finally, fee waivers. And the initial permit fees for existing businesses with outdoor uses that apply and, and that meets certain deadlines within our transitional period, the first being applying for a streetery permit by the end of this year, would be eligible for fee waivers of the initial permit fee and the encroachment lease fees. We would also extend this to new applicants based on past council direction. The annual lease fees for the use of the public space would, are as proposed, would start in January of 2025 for everyone existing and new. And we do have just very initial estimates of what that would take in terms of city subsidy, and we'll get into them next. So in this chart, we are adding up the 12 existing outdoor uses. And then we are just estimating a potential for five new food establishments to apply to the program before January 1st, 2025. And, you know, it's approximately $60,000 in subsidy. This calculation does differ than what was provided in the staff report. And I want to point that out, we had mistakenly included annual renewal fees for year two and three in the staff report. And then very briefly, as a reminder, this is the proposed transition for streeteries. Post-adoption of the ordinance, staff would start creating the online application. We would do outreach to existing outdoor dining owners. And over the, this would happen over the course of September. Then the application period would open over three months through October, from October through December. Per the ordinance, existing parklets and outdoor uses are required to apply by December 31st. And then next year, from January to June, we would be conducting final inspections after streeteries are upgraded for compliance. And then, as a reminder, January 1st, 2025 is an important date. But I will show you more in the resolution on that. We can walk through line by line. So next, I would like to share the redline version of the resolution where changes have been made to clarify the two fees. Okay. So the first change occurs with the effective date. We have added that the proposed fees shall go into effect 60 days following the final action on adoption of the proposed fees. 60 days is by law. And then, in the exhibit, we've clarified a little more between the annual encroachment lease fee, which is for the use of space, and the permit fees. And then we have detailed the dates those fees would be imposed in this list. So I can walk you through it. I will zoom in as well, if that's easier to see. So permit fees for existing outdoor dining facilities that apply by December 31st would not be imposed until January 1st of 2027. And this is consistent with past information we provided on a three-year initial permit period. For new streeteries, we also wanted to give new food establishments time to join the program. And the current date for imposition of permit fees is proposed at January 1st, 2025. That provides incentive for new restaurants to apply early as we're forming the streetery program. We are following the, the same type of timeline for sidewalk cafes, which is the other category of streeteries. And then finally, the streetery annual encroachment lease fees for the use of space based on square footage would not be imposed until January 1st of 2025. for all applicants existing and new. And I can leave it here on streetery fee structure. If council has any questions or feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Stolti. I actually have a few clarifying questions. So the last thing you said that the asterisk that you're showing for the encroachment, I like to call it rent. The encroachment lease fee shall not be imposed. So does this then mean we're not giving a waiver for the rent? I mean, we're, we're letting it go till January 25 and then we're not subsidizing the rent after that?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, so that's a little inconsistent. I think then with the slide and the presentation about the subsidy, which on, which is slide 15 in the printout.
Okay.
Which shows. I'm not trying to catch you and I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're looking at. Where it says fee waiver. Or maybe that is until January 25. This is not about, because the staff report, wasn't that showing three years worth of waivers?
Was so we've we've, so are you talking about the actual calculations and the data on the, the amount of subsidy in the chart for fee waivers? I can pull that back up too.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Which is slide 15.
This amount is just for the initial year. So that's
Initial year meaning now until January 2025?
Essentially 22, if businesses apply by December 31st of this year. Say a business gets their application in by December, so they have like a year's worth of, of the permit in 2024.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So basically, no one's paying anything really until January 25.
Correct.
And so this subsidy represents that.
Yes, that, that correct, yes.
Okay. My second question is about the three-year permit versus like the one-year permit. What's the difference? Is it the 250 annual fee? Like what, who benefits? Who, who loses in having a shorter permit period versus a longer permit period?
That's a good question. So because in the past, we had talked about an initial three-year permit period. What's on the screen right now are dates that distinguish between that three-year period for January 1st, 2027. That however, can be modified by council tonight. It would actually be a lot clearer if we set one date of January 1st, 2025 for for basically every category here.
So is the difference then in how it's implemented? If I'm a restaurateur, I would have only paid 250 for three years versus now I have to pay 250 each year of that three-year period? Is that the only kind of substantive difference in?
The difference is in the initial year of the permit, you pay a higher fee based on the higher administrative costs of processing. You know, the review in your, then there's annual renewals and they are discounted for the permit to reflect lower administrative review. And that's at $250. So that would kick in in year two and year three, anything past year one.
So regardless, if you have a one-year permit or a three-year permit, you're still paying the 250?
No, if you had a three-year permit, we would be waiving $250 in year two and three.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other clear, this is highly confusing, not because of you. It's just a lot to digest and consider. These are clarifying questions. Councilmember Nash, do you have any clarifying questions?
So I'm looking at slide number 11, where it says annual encroachment lease fee, 424 per square foot. Is that, I know that's for parklets. Is that also for sidewalk cafes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another question is, are the fees increasing with inflation over time? Or are these, or how's that related with our master fee schedule and?
So per the resolution, these fees after adoption would be added to our master fee schedule. The master fee schedule is typically brought to council at regular intervals for updates. And sometimes those updates are based on CPI. So they would be part of the, the overall master fee schedule. We would take any direction tonight on your feelings on whether those fees should increase on an annual basis based on CPI as well.
So if it rolls into the master fee schedule, it would be considered like any other city fee increasing with inflation or CPI?
Correct, we would bring that to council as a separate item in the
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Nash?
So I actually just got confused in the last comment. So the master fee schedule does not have CPI automatically. Actually, does the master fee schedule automatically increase with CPI?
It does not. That is an item that we would have to bring forward to the council to make adjustments to. It is typically done at regular intervals. I'm not sure that it's been brought to the council every year in the past and that's also typical in cities. So if, if you do have direction on whether you'd like to see the encroachment lease fees increase with CPI, then I would like to know.
So yes, just looking at just at this one task that we have, that would, correct, thank you.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Okay. Yes, Mr. Stolti.
So I just, before we move on from fees, I would just seek direction on whether the dates here listed on the screen makes sense. Whether you will want to standardize to January 1st, 2025 for, you know, all the, these categories. And if there are any, if there's any direction on the annual encroachment lease fee, the actual rate, so those two items.
Thank you. And we still need to hear public comment, but it looks like Councilmember Dor may have a clarifying question.
Yes, thank you. So there's a proposed rate and the additional increased rate of 8.5 per square foot on page 13 in this presentation. Were both of those options socialized with the local businesses?
They were social. We have notified businesses of upcoming agenda items, so in that way, but rates themselves have not been social. Like we haven't done specific outreach on, on rates.
Thank you.
All right, with that, let's move on. A city clerk, Karen, please do public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on agenda item H1, adopt resolutions to approve streetery design standards and streetery fees. If you are participating remotely, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And our first speaker will be Sandra Farrar, followed by Randy Avalos.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I have a very simple but important request for you tonight. And thank you for reading our letter that we sent through yesterday addressing our concerns of opening.
I apologize for the interruption. Actually, it looks like I have you down for item H2 regarding Ryan's enclosure. That's our next item. I apologize, I've called you too soon.
I knew this was going to get confusing with this agenda, so thanks for bearing with us, ma'am.
Oh, right. So I'm going to invite Randy Avalos up for a comment on item H1.
Thank you, Judy. Good, good evening, all. Randy Avalos, District 5. Just, there was an earlier slide regarding table seating and chairs. What were the words? Oh, focused on accessibility. Is that just basic ADA requirements or is it something else? Just curious, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item H1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Mr. Avalos, for that excellent question around accessibility. And actually, Mr. Stolti, I'll throw that question to you. Can you elaborate on what that means?
Yes, previously, the design standards were specifying, specifying size of tables and things like that. Now it's just completely focused on accessibility. If Ms. Heinz could be permitted to speak, City Clerk, maybe she can comment on ADA specifics.
Yeah, I can go ahead and just read the there's one section under tables, chairs and seating that calls out accessible seating to be provided and comply with California Building Code sections. 11B-305, which says clear floor space of 30 inches by 48 inches at 5% of seating. And then California Building Code Section 11B-306, which is a minimum knee and toe clearances. I don't have those specific numbers for the minimum knee and toe clearances, but there are several other sections in the, within the design standards that call out the requirement to follow Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility requirements.
Actually, can I ask a follow-up on that? So is the change, having it talk about accessibility, making it easier for people to have accessibility movement or hurt? Like was the original way it was written more favorable to people in wheelchairs and with accessibility? And now we've made it less favorable and more just following a regulatory rule? Or is it the opposite? I hope my question makes sense.
We made changes to this requirement to focus on accessibility instead of other requirements that would make it more restrictive for food establishments in choosing what tables and chairs they wanted. But the accessibility requirements are there and they are, they have to follow them regardless, so.
But were the original guidelines around tables and chairs aesthetic? Or were they being more accessible?
I would call them more, some of the guidelines that were removed were more aesthetic in nature. And Ms. Heinz, if you have anything to expand on that.
I mean, yeah, I would agree. They, they were more aesthetic in nature and depending on the, the specific size and area that the parklet would be taking up would really change the way that the tables and seating would need to be laid out. So giving the parklet owners or the streetery owners more discretion and how that's laid out while also requiring them to follow the Accessibility Act and make sure their space is accessible and approving that through the initial permit review and inspections. The changes just gives them a little bit more discretion in that.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz and Mr. Stolti. So we heard public comment. There's really two kind of separate topics here. One has to do with the design standards and one has to do with the fees. Since we've been talking about design standards, I'd like to start with design standards. So if we can limit our comments and direction around design standards, and then we will move on to the fees. So does anyone have any feedback around the design standards that are before us this evening? Yes, Councilmember Dor.
It's a comment to question. I'm curious, Ms. Heinz, about the wind barriers. So I know that we, we asked for some direction there and you came back with a suggestion of, of creating more flexibility for folks on the wind barriers. And I am curious, now it's making me think even at a higher level of the requirements of a wind barrier. Why do we have to require them? Can someone choose not to have them? And it curious if you can share a little bit more about that and if it is a requirement for safety or something else? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. They're, they're not, wind barriers aren't required, but there is mention of them in here. And if a business did choose to have a wind barrier for privacy or just making the space more comfortable, then they just have to follow the height minimums and, and make sure that's not blocking any sort of visibility. And then it's explicitly not allowed in areas where it's at an intersection or crosswalk or where visibility would be compromised.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Nash?
Also on wind barriers. It now says allowed to be non-transparent, which is what we requested. I wonder my concern is that we don't end up with actually having something that looks like a room without this completely trans, completely opaque. The intention I would think would be that we would have, that it would still feel like an outdoor dining space and that we don't go all the way to, so I'm, I'm thinking more like it's translucent or something, but wanting to keep plenty of options open as opposed to being opaque. And is, do we need to be more specific on that? Or is that clear that it still should, the intent is that it's outdoor dining space? And I get, I'm wondering what your comments would be on that and the transparency, translucency, opaqueness of the wind barriers.
Yeah, I can, well, I think the changes that were made, it doesn't specify material type or whether it needs to be translucent or not. So that is a desire of the council. I think that can pretty easily be added in there.
I guess I would prefer not to specify too much, but I also want to make sure that we don't end up with people utilizing this space, restaurants using this space and creating essentially another completely private dining area. Does anyone else want to help me with this?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're trying to thread the needle here between the outdoor dining. I, I would be in support of a translucent, like changing it from opaque. Because I would imagine if you're putting up like a, a black wall or a wood barrier versus one that light can come in to if that would make you more comfortable, I would be supporting that. But I, this is where like, we want to make sure we have guidelines. You don't have to go case by case and, and be unfair. So I'm a little not sure. I guess any recommendations from staff?
What I would say is I think there's flexibility with the barriers right now because we also have visibility standards as well to apply, so.
Can you remind us what those are, the visibility standards? That that makes it feel like it's outside?
Ms. Heinz, can you comment on that?
Yeah, so the wind barriers, we, we added a, just a note in the, under the wind barrier section that requires the, they can't conflict with the sight distance triangle and 20-foot clearance zone intersections and mid-block crosswalks. So it's really specific to to like locations where either the intersections or crosswalks or where it's traffic facing and it hinders the visibility in and out of the, out of the parklet.
But a parklet that's not on a corner or mid-block doesn't have any visibility standards, like they could be closed off completely.
Potentially, yes.
So I would be more comfortable if we actually do not allow opaque wind barriers. And I, like completely opaque, but I, I don't know if that resonates with others.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't have a particularly strong opinion. Councilmember Dor?
Yes, I'm looking back at our ask and that we last time had asked the, the requirement, the transparency to be removed. And so I'm, I'm just trying to remember what led us to that decision before saying yes to flipping it back again.
I think last time it was to be completely transparent. And so we've the idea that I would have is it could be etched, it could be translucent, it could be anything other than just we don't get, you know, if it's if it is opaque, it has some sort of space between the wood, whatever, just that we don't end up with something that looks like a building out there that was not intended as a outdoor cafe. And I don't know how to include that without being too restrictive.
Thank you for that clarification. So translucent, not transparent. So allowing of light, but not transparent. I don't know the right word is there, but I'm supportive of that, of encouraging natural light.
Yes, maybe that's the way to say it is that encourages natural light. But I'm thinking that I don't know if wood would be used, wood would be opaque, but it would be, you know, then one would want some sort of space in there presumably. Do we need these? How restrictive do we need as opposed to having staff make decisions?
I think we could easily make the change to translucent and encourages natural light. I think that's a good requirement and we could take note of that tonight.
Great, I think unless Councilmember Combs or Vice Mayor Taylor, do you have any thoughts on translucent, transparent, and opaqueness? Okay, great. Are there any other pieces of feedback about the design guidelines? I appreciate the 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 direction that you went in based on our feedback last time. So thank you for allowing that more flexibility that we asked for. So I'm not seeing any additional comments or questions or feedback related to design guidelines. So let's move on to fees. So does anyone want to comment on the fees? Okay, Councilmember Nash.
So the the $4.24 is the average cost of indoor space. Outdoor space presumably would not be quite as much as that. This is a general comment. So I am comfortable with having it a reduced rate as has been proposed as proposed. But after Mayor Williston and I had quite a discussion about this and came to the conclusion that $8.50 would be an appropriate rate. And then, actually, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to to support what Councilmember Nash said. We, you know, so as was presented in the staff report and in the presentation, if we actually charged the market rate, it would be 12 times $4.24, not two times $12.24 because we're looking at monthly versus yearly. And we want to be sensitive to those businesses around town, some of which we've heard from that are not able to take advantage of this. But also, we think that there's an inherent community value in subsidizing and supporting these downtown street, well, the citywide streeteries to liven up our community. So we would encourage the council to support the $8.50. I call it the rent, you call it the encroachment fee to make that change. And then Councilmember Nash, do you want to go over? The other piece of feedback that we've heard a lot and that we think so we're looking at commencing fee collection in January 25. So between now and then, it's over a year, a year and a half or so where we are not intending to collect fees. Mr. Stoltay, you outlined what that subsidy will cost for our current streeteries and potentially for up to five additional streeteries. And we think that that's reasonable, but any further subsidy, we think is is not appropriate. Again, looking at our whole restaurant community and trying to weigh the benefit to the larger community in our cities' tax dollars in the subsidization of certain eateries, but wanting to provide some waiver and incentive for the streeteries to get their paperwork in on time to allow the startup of this program in a timely manner for administrative reasons. So I think we both feel more comfortable maybe having just the annual, not starting out with the three-year thing, just having it be an annual, make it really clean. Everything starts on January 25th. Until January 25th, it's you don't pay. But after that, we have that $8.50. So those eateries are getting something between now and then. We really appreciate the creativity that a lot of those restaurants have shown. We want to recognize that and but we want to think longer term with citywide more fairness as we move forward and how we spend our tax dollars. So did I? Is there anything else you want to add? Okay, so curious to hear what our colleagues think on that topic. So opening the floor to Councilmember Combs, Councilmember Door, Vice Mayor Taylor on any thoughts or any clarifying questions you have if you followed what we were suggesting.
Thank you, Mayor Williston. So I am all for like aligning dates. And if the thinking is to push up the date, we begin collecting fees. In theory, I don't, I'm not not opposed to that. I will say like I was in favor of the proposed 424 a square foot lease fee or rental generally because again, this isn't isn't like we're selling Manhattan. These are rates for a fixed period of time of which if it's clear that these things continue to be successful, we can always increase the rates. And so that's why I was okay with the 425. If the council, that being said, you know, I don't think going to 850 necessarily, you know, removes anyone or, you know, makes this somehow too costly for for any business that was considering it. And so in that sense, like I said, I don't I don't have an objection if that's where the consensus of the council is going.
Thank you. I don't have any additional feedback.
Thank you. I am supportive of moving the dates and have them all aligned for 2025. That sounds great. On the fees, I appreciate Mayor Williston and Councilmember Nash's this idea of thinking about the rates and thinking about trying to be equitable in our treatment of all restaurants. And so that is very compelling to me. And I also know that this is doubling the rate that was at first being proposed. And so that also feels like a lot of a big, big increase here. And so I'm wondering if there might be something of like 7.5. But I think that might be splitting hairs a little bit. So I am supportive. I'm most supportive of a hair splitting option. That would be about, you know, 7.5 or $7 per square foot, but would understand and could be swayed up to the 8.5. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Door. And I think what got me there was that it's still a year and a half away. And so there's a lot of time to kind of prepare for it. I know we never want to hurt our small businesses. We really don't. But we are also trying to balance so many other factors. And I would my concern with starting at like seven or seven and a half, which I love your trying to meet in the middle there, is that you were talking about potentially a CPI adjustment and that might be like, I don't know if it's as simple as just doing that. So I could see that just getting to, I mean, if we're looking at waiting and seeing how seven and a half goes before we go to eight and a half, it just seems like there might be a lot of bureaucracy involved in that that actually will kind of like take away any gains from any subsidy. So I would prefer to stay with eight and a half just to make it clean. And also, in explaining it, the fact that it's just kind of two months out of the 12 versus more of a random number. So if you're amendable to the 850, knowing that I I would ask Mr. Stoltay if you're having folks balk at that or have or say, you know, you told us it was 425 and all of a sudden now it's 850. There's no way we're going to make it in a year now. Or I don't know, just please keep us informed on how that's landing. Yeah.
I would, and again, not changing my earlier comments, I would say, and going back to how you frame it, you know, the comparison here is Redwood City and Berlin Game, we're still under them. Lots of people would argue that those downtowns are better than ours, right? And so that we should be under them and maybe we should be under them even more significantly. And that a business going into Menlo Park and thriving in Menlo Park is is more of a risk than possibly Berlin Game or Redwood City. So I do think again, we're still under them, not as much as at the 424. But but I do think that that's, you know, again, it's all how you frame it. And 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 maybe, you know, Redwood City and Berlin Game isn't the comparison. Again, I would personally say that our downtown is way better than theirs. So I'm just going to go on the record and say that. But you know, there is a difference there. This is not necessarily an apples to apples comparison.
Thank you for pointing that out. It's helpful.
And I just did a quick calculation here. So say the difference between these two, for each business, it's 1,500, right? And say there are 12 streeteries and they all are about 360 square feet total. That's $18,000. So we're not talking about a lot of money every year. And so given that I am almost inclined to stay back to the 4.24 because this is a small thing we can do in support of our small businesses that are downtown, which is supposed to be a place that we've said we want to support economic development and increase economic vibrancy. And so we've talked often and we'll talk in the next section about Santa Cruz Road and having the closure there and the huge benefit to our community that streeteries and spaces have. And so I am now feeling more inclined towards the 4.24.
Councilmember Nash?
So I am promoting that we stay with the 850. The reason why is we have, again, 4.24 is 1/12 of what the amount is for indoor space. The 850 is 1/6. That's still quite a discount, again, realizing that it's outdoor, not indoor. There is some reduced rate, so it's no doubt less than 1/6. But it's something where I think that that is a fair assessment for when we're looking at the other retailers and other non-restaurant uses downtown that and we are talking about private businesses. Yes, we want them to flourish. And I I think that 850 is a reasonable amount to to charge.
Councilmember Combs?
Now I'm talking myself down from 850 because like, I mean, at, you know, 18,000, we would lose them. Like, right? So again, that's not the benchmark either. Like, if you say that, like, charging this every month. And so like, it's such a discount that like, we're only charging this for one year. But if we charge that fee every month, we would, we would lose them. So we can't say that, like, we're giving some great discount or benefit. We don't actually know where the market is on this thing. And I think to, you know, Councilmember Door's point, it's it's just $18,000 for the city. And so it's not, it's not significant. And if it and it could be not significant either way. But like I say, I don't, again, in the same way, Redwood City and Berlin Game are not possibly the benchmark. The benchmark is not like, you know, this fee every month because we would, we would lose this program probably at that at that rate. So I I'm more but again, we're talking about money. So is there not? This is like a perfect, when you're talking about money, split the baby situation.
I'm more comfortable now splitting the baby if you want to split the baby. There's no baby that's going to die here. And so if we want to go back to seven, seven, however high you're willing to go to get this done. And then I believe when the master fee schedule, the one thing about comparing to other cities that I've noticed with like all of our policies is that it's almost like everyone's looking at everybody else. And then so nobody might know what they're doing about market rates and what the right fee is. So I think it is important that we do our own analysis. We take that as a data point, but we look and dig deep. The fact that we haven't, that this, yes, the businesses have gotten access to our agendas and staff reports. The fact there hasn't been a huge amount of outreach to the businesses, to me, justifies splitting the baby or so. So I I'm okay joining Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Door. Councilmember Nash? Vice Mayor Taylor?
I honestly need to be brought up to speed on what's being split because it's different before I left.
So there's two proposals on the table. One is to charge $4.24 for the per square foot for the fee. And one is to charge double that, $8.50. And so we're trying to pick the right amount to charge.
And what's the recommendation of staff?
Oh, that's a great question to ask. Mr. Stoltay, what do you think we should do based on our conversation?
We are happy to take your final direction on the amendment.
Councilmember Door?
What if we landed at six per square foot?
I'd feel more comfortable with seven. That's where you were.
Councilmember Combs?
I'd be supportive of six.
I do not want to die on this hill, but I would say that there are many retailers who I think are feeling that this is a special treatment for restaurants. And I would prefer to spend any money that the city is putting toward these leases, which is, as we said, not a whole lot of money. But I think that it would be better spent with something downtown or around the city that actually promotes businesses, that promotes all businesses rather than giving special treatment to the lucky and hardworking restaurants that are going to be able to apply for the streeteries.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Nash.
So are you looking to stick with the 850? Are you going down sticking with the 850? So the splitting of the babies seems to potentially be passing. I'd be willing to go down to seven just to, but if I can't get the support from, if we can get a unanimous, if we can find an amount to be unanimous, otherwise I'd probably stick with the 850, honestly.
I mean, I would be willing to vote at seven. Although, again, just for the record, saying that I would prefer the 425. But if if the consensus is around seven, then I'll be okay with that.
And I ditto that.
So is there any chance I can get you guys to get to seven? So we can all vote for this together?
Do we have to be unanimous?
We don't have to be unanimous.
That may take a while.
Okay. So it looks like there's at least, I think I can go to seven. So we'll make a motion and then we'll see how that goes. So is there any other commentary on the on the fees?
I will just state that I am not happy to go to seven just because I do think that it's something which does provide special subsidy for a few businesses. But I will vote for seven just because I think that it is good to go to be unanimous on this. And I don't think that it's that big a difference one way or the other. And I don't think that it's that big a difference one way or the other.
Yeah, I think the compromise is when none of us are particularly happy with it. So anyway, if there's no other commentary on the fees, I can go ahead and make a motion and then everyone can make their own decision on what they're going to vote for. I think there's both sides, there's no perfect answer here. And there's rationale on on all parts of this at the different levels. And we're just trying to come up with the best decision we can. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, just because I think we all obviously heard from some businesses that thought that there was some unfairness here. And the last meeting, I wanted to include non-restaurants in this. But then it was just going to, like, I think, slow down this process, which made a lot of sense. Or which which I completely understood. I I do think, though, you know, we can't let, right, the perfect be the enemy of the good. And so in these things do bring vibrancy to 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 downtown and even not just downtown and and other, I know it's mostly concentrated in downtown, but not all the, it's not only restaurants in downtown who have sort of taken advantage of outdoor dining space. And and I I will admit that there may seem, if you're a restaurant that doesn't have the availability to do that, it it may seem unfair. But then that doesn't mean that then we do nothing, right? If there is something that that is seemingly a benefit for for the whole community. And and so I I think that would be my response or how I have responded to some of those those concerns. If if that, the idea that, you know, something that we've seen as incredibly valuable, we don't do anything to support it or encourage it, then then that's just not a trade off I'm willing to make. But I am willing to go to seven.
Okay, I think everyone's seen how the sausage is getting made. And with that, I will go ahead and make a motion, see if I can do this, to adopt two resolutions. One is regarding the design standards and.
Well, some apologies for the interruption. We will need to do two separate motions, one for the fees and one for the design.
Thank you.
So if he's likely, we can start with fees.
Okay, we can, so you're maybe start with a harder one. Okay. I will move to approve outdoor streetery fees with all of the fee collection starting January twenty twenty-five. No three-year terms. And that the fee for encroachment, AKA rent, will be set at seven dollars a square foot. Does that capture what we discussed? Is there anything I missed there?
Yes, and just the additional edits that was made to the resolution that I displayed on screen earlier.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Sultay. So I've made that motion. Is there a second? Oh, we're doing it on the computer screen technology. Bear with us for a moment.
And Councilmember Combs, can you also verbalize your second?
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Wilson, a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution to approve a streetery outdoor dining fees, including updates presented by staff, updating all dates to January first of twenty twenty-five, removal of the three-year and seven dollars per square foot annual encroachment lease fee. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, I will ask City Council to vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Does anyone want to move on the design standards or?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
A friendly amendment to edit the word transparent to translucent on the wind.
I agree.
Thank you.
I second.
I believe Councilmember Combs seconded.
If you're recording mine, then I'll second.
I have you as the second. Give me one moment to add the transparent. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution to prove streetery outdoor dining design standard with the direction on transparent. Any further city council question or discussion?
The edit was to go from transparent to translucent.
To translucent, thank you.
I'm sorry, from opaque to translucent. Or for non, actually, staff, can you please give to?
Sure.
Give us the wording.
Yes, we would, for wind barriers, the new requirement would would be that they would be translucent and you could even add encouraging natural light was the other part of it, too.
Okay, I'm seeing no one screaming about that, so we'll go with that wording.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is by Vice Mayor Taylor, second by City Councilmember Combs, adopt a resolution to improve the streetery outdoor dining design standards with the direction on wind barriers for translucent, encouraging natural light. Okay, bear with me just one moment. So at this time, the City Council should be able to vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I just realized that the CPI or inflation comment, is that just direction?
Do have it in the minutes as direction.
Okay.
Regarding, related to the master fee, correct?
Correct, that's how I have it, too.
Okay, thank you. So before we jump in to H two, I think it's a good time to take a five-minute break. So we'll reconvene at eight forty-five. There'll be a quick one. Thanks.
All right, coming our city council back on our in-person days. Mayor Wilson, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for that break to everyone who is waiting. We are now continuing with our regular business with item H two. Consider and adopt a resolution to close the eastbound travel lane of Santa Cruz Avenue from Curtis Street to Doyle Street to vehicles to allow for expanded outdoor dining opportunities, enhanced public space and related bicycle infrastructure improvements. And to introduce this item is our planning manager, Kyle Parada. Good evening, Mr. Parada.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wilson and members of the City Council. I'm also joined here by Hugh Louch, the Assistant Public Works Director for Transportation. As we'll, we'll kind of do this presentation together. It'll be relatively short. So if I can just share my screen. All right, thanks. So this item before the City Council is the proposed partial street closure of Santa Cruz Avenue in the six hundred blocks, so between Curtis and Doyle Streets. And so just a really brief overview. So as part of the initial study session for the overall outdoor dining street area program that's been on the agenda this evening, in February of this year, the City Council directed staff to look into potential permanent closures for the temporary closures on Santa Cruz and Ryan's Lane. So this evening, we're focused on the potential extension of the closure on Santa Cruz Avenue. And so in in order to enable that effort, the city did recently amend its circulation element of the general plan, as well as the El Comunal Real Downtown specific plan for this consideration. Those were recently adopted in August, on August fifteenth, excuse me. What they do allow is for consideration, as the council may remember, on Main Street and local access alleys. And so Santa Cruz Avenue is considered a main street on the city's circulation element and diagram. I do want to update the community this evening. There was a number of additional items of correspondence. Those were received through the City Council's email log. They are available online for for viewing. So the street closures that we were talking about here, so the first one, and it's the subject of the action this evening, is Santa Cruz Avenue. And so staff through the report recommends a continued closure of the current extent of the street closure. What it would also incorporate, and we do have a slide with the plan on the next slide, I would modify the space to incorporate a striped bike lane, as well as some additional modifications to the location of barriers, the extent of the potential outdoor dining, the current open seating plaza area that's used by the Wednesday night farmer's market. And so all these modifications, staff has evaluated, and it would be consistent with the Main Street classification of the circulation element. And regarding Ryan's Lane, staff understands that was discussed previously as a possibility. At this time, staffs recommend the council temporarily allow for reopening of the lane. This would allow staff to coordinate with the two adjacent restaurant businesses that may or may not need to use a lane for certain operations during temporary construction, as well as ongoing operations for for deliveries and and such. So staff would like to coordinate with those two businesses further before bringing back a possible street closure in the future for council's consideration. And so with that, I'll start on this slide briefly and then turn it over to Mr. Louch here. So this shows the extent of the current temporary street closure that staff is proposing as a long-term street closure between Curtis and Doyle. It is on the eastbound travel lane as currently out there. You know, and so to the kind of right of the block is the two kind of beige rectangles, the the one closer to the sidewalk where the labels for Bistro Vita, Left Bank and Walgreens are. Those, that's the existing parklet that's in the current or or previous parking, the current parklet that's built there. And then the potential expansion for the businesses of any outdoor cafe sidewalk dining would be within the the closed street between the new barrier and the existing parklets. And then that new barrier is shown in orange. That would separate the new striped bike lane from the potential expanded outdoor dining opportunity there for those businesses. The blue rectangle kind of on the, kind of towards the left of the street closure closer to Curtis is the slightly modified footprint of the outdoor open communal seating plaza-like seating that's there currently. As part of the proposal, we would incorporate barriers. Planters, most likely, the existing trees could be moved and used there to separate the bicyclists from the outdoor seating area. And then as with the current configuration, there would still be a K-rail in the separation between the travelway on the westbound and the street closure to protect bicyclists and pedestrians using that space. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Louch to talk more about the connections in and out of the street closure for the bicyclists.
Thank you, Mr. Prada, and thank you again, Mayor and Council. So the, generally speaking, you know, the conditions today that we see before this is in places that we did see a lot of wrong way bicycling on that block of Santa Cruz where the closure has existed since the pandemic. And we see, you know, do see a lot of use of the seating area, obviously, by students. So when this comes into place, you know, you'd have an opening there that would allow students who are and others who are bicycling up Santa Cruz, you know, towards El Comino Real to enter into the space and then exit on the far side. When this was kind of suggested as a preferred direction that we heard from city council, we did go out as a transportation team and sort of review what additional items we thought might be needed to make this operate as safely as possible. And so a couple of things that we're suggesting are, as you can kind of see on the top part of Santa Cruz here, so going in the westbound direction and on other blocks not shown, we'd be talking about adding sharrows to make it clear that people are bicycling along Santa Cruz Avenue. That's not necessarily formally part of our bicycle network, but it's a condition that exists today, and it's just a kind of acknowledging that. And then on the right side of this diagram, as you can see, the objective is going to be to angle bicyclists as they come out of this closed street, essentially as much as we can to help them slow down or encourage them to slow down as they exit the space. We know we've heard from folks writing in, and it's certainly an observation, not just here, but at other places in the city that, you know, it's not uncommon for bicyclists not to stop at stop signs. And given the sort of different nature of this space not being a street and one type of user only exiting, you know, we want to make sure we do everything we can to help reduce the speeds of people as they approach and move through this space. And so that's why that kind of angles. And then maybe if we go to the next slide, we also looked at some additional changes that might happen as we move then in that last block of Santa Cruz between Doyle and El Comino Real. And the, and the thinking here really is that because of the closure, the volumes on this last block, at least in the eastbound direction in particular, are very, very low, something like 50 vehicles in the peak hour. So we really wanted to kind of tighten up the space a little bit, just there's a lot of essentially asphalt that at this point is unused. And so we tried to make that a little bit more, look a little bit less like a sea of open space on, or sea of open asphalt, I should say, and then separate users in time, right? So technically, everyone should stop. And then as people move through this space, like on a bicyclist in one direction or coming from Doyle or the other, or the westbound direction of Santa Cruz, they will be moving into that space and then go to their respective destinations that they're trying to get to. We do see that a lot of the people in vehicles who are coming from Doyle and making a right onto Santa Cruz are then making a left onto Maloney. That's one of the more common movements, although they also, of course, go out to El Comino Real or across the street. So there are a number of different things happening, but again, such low volumes that what we're trying to do is just make it a little bit less fewer places where people can have conflicts between people biking and people driving. So that's what we've tried to achieve with this. And, you know, pending your direction, this is what we would then move forward with and implement with one of our contractors.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Louch. So then this evening, to reiterate what's in the staff report, the recommended actions before the city council, as presented by staff in Attachment A, is to adopt a resolution approving the long-term street closure of the eastbound direction of Santa Cruz Avenue between Curtis and Doyle Streets to vehicles, as well as to install a new bike lane in the eastbound direction of Santa Cruz Avenue on that same block. And with the understanding of the related improvements that Mr. Louch just referenced on either side of the street closure for bicyclists. And that concludes our presentation, and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prada and Mr. Louch for that presentation. Are there any technical terrifying questions? I think we'll go to public comment, please, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item H two, consider and adopt a resolution to close the eastbound travel lane of Santa Cruz Avenue from Curtis Street to Doyle Street to vehicles to allow for expanded outdoor dining opportunities, enhanced public space, and related bicycle infrastructure improvements. If participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. All right, so our first speaker will be Sandra Farrar.
Thank you again. And thank you for reading our letter, addressing our concerns of opening Ryan's Lane and forcing Carpatio to remove all outside dining equipment and furnishings to enable the proposed new Restaurant Clarks to use this alley space on Ryan's Lane for construction purposes. I was disappointed to learn that this was being discussed and moving forward with no contact with anyone from the city. This, of course, would completely prevent us from continuing with our outside dining, starting almost immediately, if I understand the date. And that, there's probably another three months to this season where we could be outside and have the added revenue from the alley dining. The change would come at a significant cost to Carpatio to pull everything down and a significant loss of revenue. People want to dine outside, and if we do not have outside dining, they will simply go elsewhere. They won't come inside. They'll go elsewhere. They'll take their dogs and go elsewhere. There are ways our two businesses can work together. That's Carpatio and Clarks. We've said this from the very beginning. We put our planter boxes on rolling wheels so that we can move things away. We've said all along, we wanted to talk to the people that are coming into Clark so that we could work together. We're currently working on, with a construction crew that's doing the refacing of the 1120 crane building, and it's working very, very well. So they come in, they store their equipment, their construction equipment to the side in the evening. They bring it back in the morning. We work very well. It's not perfect, and there's a lot of dust. But it's, but we're working together, and we're not, they're not asking us to go without outside dining for three weeks, four weeks, five weeks while they reface our building. They're working with us. As far as communication with Carpatio, I know that there was a comment on H one that all of the restaurants were talked to about the pricing structure. Carpatio didn't get that phone call, didn't get that knock on the door. I'm there Tuesday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So if the front door happens to be locked for some reason, I'm there. Our phone works, our email works, and I'm always willing to work with anyone that needs our assistance. We want to be a good neighbor, but we also want to be recognized as a restaurant and a business partner of Menlo Park. We've been here for over 35 years. That's a lot of families. We've helped have a livelihood, and we want to continue in that. But we need to be considered like all the other restaurants. We're half a block off Santa Cruz, but sometimes it's, that half a block is like a different city. So I appreciate you listening to me tonight, and I'd very much like to be able to have a conversation and come to some sort of solution with the neighbors next door. We can do that. We can make it work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Adina Levin, and this will be the final call for public comment on item H two.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. I live on the far side of downtown and visit the, that downtown area essentially on a daily basis, if not multiple times per day. And I wanted to express thanks for this proposal to continue the outdoor dining that adds to the enjoyment and quality of life for residents and visitors and, you know, helps our downtown be a little bit more lively with people, you know, walking around and sitting and dining. So I wanted to support that. Also wanted to express thanks for the proposal for the bicycle travel through the area. I have noticed the, I guess, the pop-up temporary bicycle route through that went in recently, and it's you know, very useful, you know, from the get-go. The, on, on Santa Cruz, there's always people on bicycles coming forward of all ages and the, you know, being able to go through the downtown in both directions is something that is just a useful thing to be able to do. Having the, you know, treatments that encourage people to bicycle slowly and safe, safely is, is fine. And just, you know, enabling people to follow the desire lines that, you know, we saw people doing anyway less legally and safely, enabling people to do it more legally and safely is better. And with a tiny little bit of a digression, earlier on in this meeting, when I was listening to the meeting on mobile while taking a walk, I walked by the section of middle, just about a tenth of a mile between Fremont and University. And there were eight bicycles in that one tenth mile going, you know, to and fro, you know, commuting and with, like, you know, apparently going shopping. So this is a form of travel that people just use in a matter of course in our community. So thank you very much for accommodating that as well in addition to maintaining this outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Randy Avalos, followed by Ross Silverstein.
Good evening all. Thank you. Randy Avalos, District Five. So the proposal makes for a more permanent use of the commons to favor some private businesses, but also to improve community atmosphere, which is great. But the use of the commons involves trade-offs, and missing from the details are two parties. So one is, you know, commuters and general traffic with people getting used to living with COVID. People are more out and about. We have increased congestion. From the west side, it's often just more convenient to go to Palo Alto. But the more important group that's kind of missing is accessibility. So each spot removed, each parking spot removed reduces access for those with disabilities. I know we're not really removing additional blue spots. But now for people, not everyone can walk and bike around. And for those who may not have friends, family, or loved ones with disabilities, designated handicap parking spots, particularly in destination areas during regular hours, which hopefully are downtown, are often in use. This is a known thing. Handicap placards help compensate for this by allowing free metered parking, unlimited green zone parking, and resident merchant privileged parking just by default, because blue spots are generally not enough. Anyways, so as we reduce parking across the city and increase housing density, we are increasing competition for parking in the commons. You know, higher demand, less supply simply means increased conflict. This compact, this competition impacts residents differently. It may seem like a small impact, because most of us on this call are not on the margin where the impacts hits. But you know, we're making these trade-offs in the commons without mentioning these impacted parties. Just because they're not on this call, or may, maybe not, they don't live in the city yet, does not mean they won't feel an impact. So we're somewhat on the margins discouraging participation in our community commons from this diverse group. Now, obviously, this is not an intent, but I do see as an outcome of the trade-off. And so to my knowledge, these parties are not mentioned in the public report, which gives the impression, and just the impression, mind you, because I didn't see them mentioned, that we either don't know about these trade-offs or have not really cared to consider them. That's just an impression. So it's one way to take away accessible options for those with disabilities and have that trade-off. It's another to not even include them in our public consideration. So, you know, the Bay Area has been a champion for disability access, and, you know, the previous item, even the guideline for the parklets had to be adjusted to comply with basic ADA requirements. I didn't catch that from the previous meetings. Luckily, some consultant caught that. But we had to be reminded about that just to be compliant. So it may seem like a small impact, but small impacts add up over time on the margin. I hope we can keep these unseen parties in mind and in the public conversation down the line as we increase competition in the parking commons. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Ross Silverstein.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead, Russ.
Hi, City Council of Menlo Park. Thanks for the time. I would say that to even consider removing this half-block of car-free space that we have downtown would be to give up on the idea that our downtown would ever be a place that people want to hang out, congregate, enjoy a meal with friends and outside in our beautiful weather. I urge you, making this decision, to think about the best downtown experiences you've ever had in other cities, big and small, around the world. And I imagine those aren't the ones that are simply covered in cars and asphalt. I bet also those fun experiences weren't just driving, getting out, getting back in your car after quickly shopping. Are we so unimaginative that the best thing we can think of to revitalize our downtown is yet another lane of traffic and yet another parking spot? Why not expand these pedestrian era, areas even further and get creative with how it can truly benefit everyone? Mini playground for families, fountains, live music, greenery, art fairs, and more. We even heard this evening from Assistant Public Works Director Louch that some of our Main Street in Menlo Park is currently bathed sickly in empty asphalt. Let's use that space better. I've heard concerns that the current half-block closure on Santa Cruz isn't fair because only some merchants get to benefit from the extra space and not others. Doesn't that imply these spaces are beneficial and should be expanded to even more places? I loved hearing the comment from Councilmember Combs about trying to expand these outdoor spaces beyond just restaurants. Also, any concerns that the current closure is clunky and imperfect is all the more reason to make it permanent today so we can actually take the time to design these streets properly. Please don't roll back the little progress we've made in our broader society and slowly turning the tide against our overreliance on cars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I am seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willis, and you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment. We heard a variety of viewpoints. So it's always a good reminder that we live in a community, but not everyone feels exactly the same way about everything all the time, and that's okay. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for any questions, comments. Please, Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, so I'll dig into the Ryan's Lane issue first. So is, is what the staff is proposing is to immediately or somewhat immediately reopen Ryan's Lane? It just, yeah, so that's my question.
Kyle, I can jump in here. So our intent, and thank you for your comments tonight, Ms. Farrar. Our intent is to have our interim economic development manager Fran Dean continue to work with both businesses. We didn't want to bring a resolution on street closure for Ryan's Lane until we spent more time with both businesses on more creative solutions on the use of that space. We need a little more time. What we could work towards is bringing a resolution on street, on the alley closure. We need a little more time. What we could work towards is bringing a resolution on the alley closure on the September 12th agenda. But I would like to give Ms. Dean a little more time to work with both parties.
So we're, so the action that staff wants from the council tonight doesn't change anything, is it, or at least to Ryan's Lane, or it does?
Correct. We've checked in with the new restaurant going in. Construction isn't slated to start until later in September, so there's a little bit of time. I don't think we would necessarily make any big changes on Ryan's Lane until we've worked that out and then bring the reso back.
I... Thank you. I just want to confirm that our interim economic director was able to connect with the businesses beforehand, because I know that that was a concern of when was contact made, given that this process has been moving.
Yes, Ms. Dean did make contact. I'm not sure if everyone knows that she's working for the city as our interim economic development manager, but she did visit Carpatios and speak with Ms. Farrar about the plan here. Yeah, and more conversations to come.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that there's going to be ongoing conversations happening, and I'm encouraged by that. And obviously, we are very sympathetic, Ms. Farrar, to your situation. And we, you know, we hope some resolution can be reached for at least some amount of time. I do want to point out, or I guess ask Mr. Stolte, and this might be based on previous ordinances or resolutions or whatever. The stretery program or the right to be in the street by any given restaurants, this is not about Ryan's Lane, is contingent on, like, there's not an entitled or I don't know what the right word is, a presumption that this is someplace that you get to be in forever and ever because you're there. Because last week, was that just last week, we had a study session on zoning changes. You know, we've yet to vote on those zoning changes. That'll be coming later. But if we move forward with certain upzonings in downtown, one of the topics is that could potentially spark more revitalization, more development, more construction. So I would imagine that some folks in streeteries might be kind of having to grapple with a need for certain spaces in front of certain buildings. So just curious if you've thought through that because I feel like this might be the canary in the coal mine situation here. And just wanted to see if you could comment on that.
What I'll say is that there is conflict over use of space when it comes to development downtown. I don't know what all of those conflicts will be, but through our economic development working group in the city manager's office, we hope that we can work with the businesses downtown to accommodate each other's needs. This is, I think, the first example of that because there are two restaurants that are requiring the use of the same space for different reasons. But we think we can actually have some creative solutions here. It's just going to take a little bit of time. In terms of use of the public right-of-way, it's not a right of any business. It is determined by the city. That is public space, so there may be points in time where outdoor dining, you know, outdoor dining uses may have to be altered to accommodate development projects, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so I'll kick off the Santa Cruz discussion.
Yeah, so any other comments about, so I think Ryan's Lane is kind of the comment about Ryan's Lane in the staff report was a heads up. Again, we're encouraged that you're talking. We appreciate you coming down to council chambers. And, but I think the balance of our conversation is going to be around Santa Cruz. So, Councilmember Combs, unless anyone has any other comments about Ryan's Lane. Okay, Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, okay. So I'll then move on to Santa Cruz and so and the closure there for the 600 block. And it's really interesting. Thank you for the public comment. And Mr. Silverstein, who is, full disclosure, my neighbor, are looking at this exactly the same, but we came to different conclusions. And my, you know, concern about keeping it closed in support for actually opening up the travel lane is because I don't know how this fits into any larger city policy or goal. It just seems like a kind of ad hoc leftover aspect of the pandemic. And if it were part of a larger, like, oh, we're closing this, and this is going to 600 block on this side is going to be closed, and then in six months or a year, we're gonna sort of look at closing the other side of the 600 block, and then we're gonna move to the next block. Then I could, like, you know, substantively say, I think that's a good thing or not a good thing, but I see the larger vision. And here, it's just sort of like closing, having closed this one, this one block to vehicular travel, of which I have supported in the past, but of which now the question is, do we make it permanent? And I'm like, my question is permanent to what end? As part of what larger vision? That, and that's what I was saying last time we discussed this, is that like, now is the time to have that discussion, right? And so, and I don't see the larger vision. I just see, like, you know, sort of one block in downtown that remains closed. And I do think that what has been achieved there, and I don't discount the community gathering spot that it has become, and I do think that that's really special and is lightning in the bottle because, you know, we tried it right around the corner in Curtis, and it was a disaster. And I don't quite know why, but here it has been successful. And so, but I do think, like, what happens there to some degree can continue to be achieved by, you know, by just taking use of the parking stalls. Now, and maybe even then you also use some of the parking stalls on Curtis. And so then that allows you the space for the vendors, for the farmers market. But then I could see that as part of, like, yes, because when I look at the streeteries, I say, like, you know, someone says, like, well, how does that look in five years? I was like, well, it looks like the streeteries, if they're successful, they look like that in five years. But just keeping the 600 block closed, if someone says, again, what's the larger vision? What's the policy? I don't, it has to be tied to that for me to say that, like, yes, we're just gonna, we're gonna keep it closed. And so that's my thinking. I have, this is something I very much struggle with and gone back and forth. But that's where I've landed for the moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. I guess I'll, I'll respond from there. So, you know, obviously, we've received a lot of feedback. Thank you, Mr. Beltramo. I've read every one of your emails, watched all your videos. I just want to acknowledge that we are taking your feedback very seriously, as we take all the feedback very seriously. I also went and looked back at my emails from February, where we kind of talked about this before. We've received a lot of different emails. I know Ms. Dean, in her capacity, well, no, I believe it was you, Mr. Beltramo, did a survey about the businesses. So, I mean, we've known there's kind of two major viewpoints, open it or close it all along, and then we just kind of have to make a decision. I think, Councilmember Combs, your point about what's the vision is a fair one. If I, my answer to that, when you said that, and I actually thought of the Curtis failed parklet that popped in my head as soon as you started talking. But that came out of the downtown specific plan. And I actually did not study up on the downtown specific plan prior to this meeting. And as you were speaking, I kind of wanted to go and run and look at what it said. But I think it did talk about, in terms of visioning the downtown, to have these community gathering spaces. And so I see this as kind of the direction that we want to head as a community to enable these places around downtown. And so to me, this is, this is like the first downtown specific plan-esque visionary thing kind of coming to fruition. And in five years, you're right, it might not look exactly like it does now. But I'd like to be able to invest in making it, you know, Ollie from Bistro Vita, you know, he built those tables, he put it all in, but really being thoughtful and mindful about how, once we decide to go forward with this, how we really activate that space the best it can be. And as far as its permanency, I believe we do still, while we're saying, if we say that we want to keep it as is, it doesn't mean in perpetuity forever. At any time, the council has the discretion, or future council has the discretion to change their mind and bring it back. Now, we know there's different investments that might be made and whatnot. But given, you know, like I said, I've read everything, I've seen everything. I'm very much in favor of keeping it as is, because I do see it fitting into that larger vision that we have. So, but I respect your opinion and the opinion of all the folks that would like to see it otherwise. Would anyone else like to comment at this time? Vice Mayor Taylor? Okay, Councilmember Nash?
So I would also like to see it stay as is, although, as everyone else has said, there are many different viewpoints. I think we've heard in February from many, many residents who personally use the space and who thoroughly enjoy their experience there with the outdoor dining in Santa Cruz Avenue. I regularly am going by the space in front of Walgreens and Starbucks and see many, many people using it at all times of the day. And I think that that cannot be achieved if we go down to one lane, and it's, I think we have achieved somehow this very vibrant space, a wonderful space for people to gather of all ages. And at different times of day, we see different groups of people using it. But I would really think it would be a mistake to alter that. I think that as we finish with the zoning, as we know more about what downtown looks like, we should be going through more of a visioning process. I think that the downtown will be changing with the zoning and as we continue talking about downtown and revitalizing it. So I think that this is the beginning of a conversation and something that I would like to continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo appreciation for everyone who's reached out, and I'm so grateful that we have a chance to have this civic dialogue and this conversation about how we want our downtown to look. And I hope that this kind of conversation can continue as we do this visioning and as we think about what we want to create. In reading, I think it was just a few weeks ago, I, it was mentioned in the documents received, the idea of a central plaza, and that's an idea that's been ruminating with me now for the last few weeks, thinking about one vision that we might be exploring here and that we can continue to revisit over the years is are we moving towards something like Boulder's Pearl Street or Downtown Mall in Charlottesville, Virginia, or the Santa Monica Third Street Promenade? Spaces where people can enjoy all the diverse businesses as well as restaurants, where young people, either from college, we have Stanford right there, or from the schools, can go and enjoy things, people of all ages, people who are now joining our community, who will be in maybe the the new housing developments that are coming downtown can all celebrate and have a downtown together. And so what I see, this little opportunity of continuing to close Santa Cruz is to help make our downtown area our downtown. The place that is where we have all this vibrancy and all this opportunity. I'm also eager to continue because we just now have this new bike lane installed. We are just on the way to make this a safer bike intersection, and I'll go into that in a little bit. And school just started. And so I think it would be interesting to see now that we have this new bike lane and schools in session, how everything mixes because we have made some adjustments now. So I'm eager to stay it as it is and to continue exploring as a council. Maybe, does that mean it comes back to us next year and we hear insight from the community? I don't have a specific recommendation on that, but would pose that if that would make folks feel better on the dais, that let's set a time when we'd like to talk about this again and assess how the options look. Some things I do want to see, along with the continued closure, is, I know there's a plan with the striping, just add a little stop sign. I know striping will take more than next week. And to increase safety in the short term, I wonder if we can have some removable sign that is a little bit more out in the bike lane there, so folks are aware that they still need to stop, especially students. I'm nervous about their safety. Two, I'm curious about how we can move forward quickly with the striping next to the bike area in Walgreens. Appreciating that there, from the videos and things, there are people who are standing in what should be the bike lane. And so to make sure that people are safely, pedestrians are safely away from that is important. And hold for conversation maybe at a later date and want to appreciate Randy Avalos for his comment about accessibility. As downtown is changing and growing here, not just with Santa Cruz, I would hope that we can revisit how we do ADA parking and see about increasing accessibility to ensure that those folks who have no other option other than to drive do have access to downtown, while at the same time, we're encouraging folks that have other opportunities to try their ways getting downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Willison and council members for sharing your perspective about downtown. And since it is one of our priorities, I'm happy this is on the agenda. I brought up a comment a few weeks ago just about how things look a little piecemeal. So knowing that vision is going to be extremely helpful, especially if we're looking at closing streets, continuing to keep streets closed. I initially came to the council meeting thinking that I would actually vote no and to reopen the street, just because I need to see that vision to understand what we're doing downtown. And then also, just thinking about the zoning changes, the way to get the plaza that we're looking for is through the zoning changes and the development that will happen downtown. And so I'm not sure when this will come back or anything as we look at where we are on our work plan as a city council, but it's extremely important. I do struggle with the piecemeal projects here, especially if they're impacting our businesses. Where there's an assumption that we're putting businesses above retail, we have struggling retail, we want to attract businesses to Menlo Park, not discourage them. We've taken away parking. I just look at all these pieces that we have done that is supposed to increase the vibrancy and also increase safety. Some things that I see that's more about its rider behavior. Very rarely do I see bicyclists stopping at stop signs and adhering to the rules. And so it's a struggle sometimes when you see that and you're providing the additional safety, but folks are not using it. And so maybe some increased tickets to bicyclists may be helpful. So, but I do agree with Councilmember Dorr about adding the additional safety measures along that road to make sure that there's a little bit more safety. But I'm just bringing it up again. Piecemealing is not going to bring vibrancy to our downtown. We do need to look at the entire vision and what our goal is. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I think we all agree with everything you said. And I do have to say, before I was on council, I worked a lot on safe routes to school issues. And one of the fundamentals of safe routes to school is education. So I would just ask that, I know we have a safe routes to school coordinator, that this topic of downtown riding downtown be really elevated at the schools. I was going to put our interim economic development director in touch with the principal at Hillview, who I know from when I used to work on safe route bike education. But I think it's really like a cultural thing. So, you know, we need to model the behavior we want to see. So I would just encourage everyone in our community who is out there riding, which is a great thing, to model the behavior that we all want to see. I do want to point out that even when the road was open to cars, I don't think any of those kids were stopping at the stop sign either. So I don't think it's inherent to the new closure that we're seeing this behavior. It's a little bit of a chicken and an egg with the infrastructure and education, but I think we definitely need to look at all of those variables and really work with our safe routes to school program. Yeah, I can't stand it when kids aren't riding well, but I also know that me going out there and wagging my finger probably isn't the best strategy and my kid But I also know that me going out there and wagging my finger probably isn't the best strategy and my kids would kill me. So, yeah, thanks. Any other comments? Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, you should go out there and say, I'm the mayor, stop doing this. So speaking of totally fair, the direction the council is, is going in. But speaking of this idea of accessibility, like, does, do we have an obligation for that space to make it more accessible? Like, because, because it's a curvature of the street there, like, right? Is there some sense that we're going to go in and make that like a platform to some degree? Because again, if this were, we, again, I know it's not a streetery, but this is far from the standards. We just, we just asked, if this is something that we're saying is permanent, that, that we've just sort of mandated streeteries to have. And so it's just my sense that like, not to put stuff on the, the spot, but let's be thinking about that. If it looks as though the council is going in the direction it's going to go in, that, that, that is just not like, you know, just the street, that we try to do something there.
Yeah, I would plus one that. Did you have Mr. Proder, Mr. Logfish, or anything you wanted to say about that? Or just something to look at?
No, we were, we were taking, discussing and taking notes, so we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? So I believe staff is seeking direction on this item to adopt a resolution to close the eastbound travel lane and to allow the expanded outdoor dining opportunities, enhance public space and related bicycle infrastructure improvements. Oh, we already have our technology here with us for a moment. We're COVID council, so we're learning how to do in-person things. Okay, so is there someone moving this?
I would move, but I would want to make the addition of-
Oh, I see, actually, there's already a motion and a second. Do you have, oh, sorry, there is not. Okay, so that was on the last motion. So Councilmember Dorr, you want to move it with some modification?
Yes, move the Santa Cruz closure with an ask to get a impermanent stop sign up as soon as possible.
I'm guessing that might be direction.
Is that direction?
Yeah, I think we can take that as direction. I, I will caution you that it's not like we have stop signs sitting around necessarily. If we have anything in the courtyard, it's possible we could-
I've seen it when the power outages happen.
Install something, but I, I can't promise that we have something, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, I think even, right, the stop sign option, when, when lights are out, something very simple would be helpful just to make sure those, especially the kids are safe, that everyone is safe. I will go ahead and motion. Thank you.
I have seconded.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dorr and a second by City Councilmember Nash to adopt a resolution approving the long-term street closure of the eastbound direction of Santa Cruz Avenue from Curtis Street to Doyle Street to vehicles and install a new bicycle lane in the eastbound direction that would allow for the expansion of outdoor seating associated with the existing parklets, outdoor dining along Santa Cruz Avenue and the continued communal seating area within Santa Cruz Avenue. Any further city council questions or discussion? If none, one moment. And our vote cast system is just taking a little bit of time. Okay, go ahead and proceed with voting. Thank you. All right, and the motion passes with City Councilmember Combs dissenting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So we are, and thank you again to everyone in our community that cares so much about all of our small businesses, all of our kids. We all care about all these things, it's just some of these decisions are, are very tricky. Okay, we are now moving on to I, which is our informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our informational items, I one, city council agenda topics, or I two, update on city council procedures. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items I one and I two. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments about the informational items? Okay, we are going to move on to J, our city manager's report. Good evening, City Manager Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor. So one thing to report on, and it's on the topic of transportation. So two things, one is the Vision Zero Action Plan and the other is the Comprehensive Study, Shuttle Study. So there's a couple of opportunities for a public input on those. So one, the downtown farmer's market on Sunday, there's going to be a tent there with transportation staff. So members of the public can talk about the Vision Zero Action Plan, Comprehensive Shuttle Study, or any other things that residents would like to take, talk to the transportation staff about. And I know that there's no shortage of transportation issues. So that's an event this, on September 10th. And this is a follow-on from a recent session at the Bellhaven Library, one in English and one in Spanish about the Vision Zero plans that occurred in the past couple of weeks. And then there's going to be another pop-up event on the Comprehensive Shuttle Study at the Bellhaven Elementary School on September 12th. And then a virtual event on September 14th. So all of these items are going to be on the city calendar and they'll be, we'll be pushing out additional information about those, those events. So that's the Vision Zero Action Plan and the Comprehensive Shuttle Study. So that's my update for this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Okay, we are now moving on to city council member reports. And actually, before we get up to the dais, City Clerk Karen, can you please introduce K one, which is under city council member reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So the item before the city council this evening is to confirm a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which occurs this September. City council is being requested to select a voting delegate and/or an alternate. And that concludes my introduction at this time. Happy to answer questions-
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So I am actually attending the League of California Cities Conference. I've never been. I don't know if any of you have been. So I, are any of you attending that this is coming up September 20th to the 22nd? And for those members of the public, this is the annual meeting of all the different city council members and folks throughout the state meeting. So given that I'm the only one attending and the mayor, do I then nominate myself to represent the city and be the voting delegate? Or City Clerk Karen, what, what do we need to do here?
Let's open up public comment first.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item K one, confirm a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. All right, seeing no hands or cards, we can return it to the city council and do a motion and a second to select the mayor as the voting delegate.
All right, I'll move that I'll be the voting delegate to the League of Cities Conference.
Thank you.
Oh, never mind, I think the technology, okay, you got it.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor currently by Mayor Willison and a second by City Councilmember Dorr to select Mayor Willison as the voting delegate. There's no further city council question or discussion, please proceed with voting. All right, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will report out from what I learned at this conference, should be interesting. Okay, we are now moving on to city council member reports. I actually have a quick one from the local policymaker group, which is the Caltrain group that I sit on. And that is that electrification is going. And they anticipate revenue service in September of next year. So it looks like there will be electric trains running, collecting fares a little over a year from now. And for those of you who cannot wait to check out the electric trains, there was an event recently in San Jose where like, they were expecting hundreds of people to come and there were thousands of people there. I guess people really like trains. There's going to be another one, if you missed it, in September, September 23rd in San Francisco. And you can actually catch the train, there's actually going to be a family event that 350 Silicon Valley is doing to go from here to San Mateo and then on to San Francisco to check out the new electric trains. And then they're also organizing one to come to San Mateo County at some point. So if you don't want to travel very far, you can still check out the electric trains. But I got to see a whole video, which you don't need to see, it's a train. Anyway, so that's my update from the local policymaker group. Does anyone have any other city council member reports? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Peninsula Clean Energy has an exciting new program. The board at the last meeting approved the local government building electrification program, which will support electrification projects at local government facilities. It includes phasing in a new $10 million revolving loan fund for government agencies. The Burgess Pool electrification was one of the highlighted needs in the presentation. Grant applications are opening in Q one and, I'm sorry, in Q four of 2023. And the funding will be available in Q one 2024. So hopefully we can take part in that.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, thank you. Two quick little updates. One, a few weeks ago, I just didn't, or forgot to share last time. I had a chance to meet with the Sharon Heights Golf Course. They have recycled water that they use on their court, on their greens. And we discussed if there might be opportunities to work with the city to use that water. Still very, very preliminary, but it was an interesting conversation and eager to see if there might be avenues to bring that water to Menlo Park. And if not to Menlo Park, are there other ways to make sure that recycled water gets used? Because as we know, we were in a drought and who knows when a drought might come again. The other update is last week, I got to participate in a live event with Nuestra Casa, which is a nonprofit that's based in East Palo Alto. And it was a housing conversation on affordable housing in Spanish with myself and Vice Mayor Antonio Lopez from East Palo Alto, talking with them about what is the housing element? And what are our hopes for affordable housing? And where can they go for resources on affordable housing? And so it was a great conversation. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. My report out is about a steering committee that I'm on that is for home for all for San Mateo County. And the, we actually met today. And the goal is to not just convene the council, but also to build the momentum to move forward with providing an update for the, to the home for all website. The goal, at least my hope, is that they will streamline some of their processes to make it simpler for cities so that they're not just looking at the different counties in the Bay Area, but they're looking at all the cities within San Mateo County and creating a process through their online where you can apply for affordable housing through their website for any city in San Mateo County. They also provided an update on the homelessness data and resources. And also upcoming topic on our next meeting is going to be about the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority. And I will actually give the, a copy of this to the city clerk to have it as an attachment to the agenda minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Any other city council member reports? Nope. Okay. So we, as I mentioned at the very beginning of this meeting, we will be adjourning to closed session. But before that, we are allowing another opportunity for public comment on our closed session items L one, L two, and L three. So City Clerk Karen, can you please call for a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our closed session items, L one regarding labor negotiations, L two, also regarding labor negotiations, or L three, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person and complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our closed session items L one through L three. Seeing none, Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So it is 9:49 and at this time, the city council will adjourn this regular meeting and reconvene in closed session. The closed session report out, if any, will occur at the September 12th city council meeting. Thank you and good night.